15, 2017, regular school committee meeting of the Nishoba Regional School District. We have a few guests tonight, which we are so excited about. So, thank you, parents, students, teachers. And we're gonna open it up, first of all, actually calling the meeting in order at 6 o'clock. Sorry about that, Lita. Are there any citizens in the room that have comments? Hi, could you give us your name and your town?
Sure, I'm Laura Roberts from Bolton.
So, before you start, Laura, I just have to read something.
Okay.
So, the school committee meeting is a business meeting, but it's open to the public, okay? And I won't just look at you, so I'll look at everyone else.
It's okay, you just take a minute, it's fine.
I don't want you to feel singled out. But we do have policies that govern the comments that are made at the school committee meeting. They're policy KE and VEDH. We devote three minutes to each speaker, and when you speak, you're sharing your comments and your thoughts with us. It's not an interaction, so don't be offended if we're not responding and solving concerns that you may have. And I know you wouldn't do this, but I'm gonna read it anyway. We wanna make sure that the comments are attached to an agenda item on the agenda. If not, then I'll take that and we'll consider putting it on another agenda in an upcoming meeting. It's your opportunity to share your thoughts. Please direct your comments to me. This is the part, I know you're not gonna do, but improper conduct and remarks cannot be allowed, and they cannot be about an individual, either a teacher, an administrator, school committee member, or a student especially. And if anybody else has comments about the same topic, we would just ask that you respect the first speaker's comments and then add to that without duplicating it. Okay? So, Ms. Roberts from Bolton.
Hi, I'm Laura Roberts, and I have two preschoolers. One will go on to full-day kindergarten next year, and one is accepted into the full-day preschool program. I wanted to thank the superintendent and the chair just for responding to my inquiries over the last few weeks via email. I appreciate the dialogue and the opportunity to get my questions answered. But I do still have some remaining concerns, because, and this is related to the budget, so that's why I feel like it's appropriate to talk about preschool. I feel that the preschool program would have to exist without the tuition-based aspect of it. It's an integrated preschool program that the town provides, not just because it's a nice thing to do, but because they need to prepare special needs students to, not compete, but to be up to speed with their peers in preparation for kindergarten. So, I understand, looking through past documents, that the tuition was calculated much differently. So, I'm still, you know, I'm unsure of the change. I feel like it shouldn't be on the backs of preschool parents. I think, you know, there is acknowledgement that the program runs inefficiently as it currently runs, so I feel uncomfortable with you placing that on the parents of the preschoolers rather than taking the hard look at the program over the next year. Maybe split the difference with us, maybe come up with some sort of compromise solution. Even if I look at the way it was calculated in the past, this 32 to 35 percent increase is, it's drastic. I've already been accepted into the full-day program. I've been out visiting preschools all week because, you know, it just doesn't meet my budget. And if I had known that sooner, I wouldn't have so many preschool programs telling me, "We're full, we can't take your child." And you still haven't notified all the parents of this change, so many parents are gonna be affected and not able to find a quality preschool at this point if they need to make a change. And I did, I had my research on comparable preschool programs, how much they cost when you break it down by hour. It's, the preschool at Nishoba is now more than any of the other programs I've found, private, public, even daycare settings. Daycare settings are much, much cheaper, if you wanted to refer to it as a daycare, but I don't. That would be an insult to the teachers of the program. And so, I just, I really urge you, before taking the vote on the budget tonight, to take a hard look. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate you sharing your thoughts and your comments. And when we get to the portion of the budget, portion of the agenda for the budget discussion and vote, maybe we can have the finance subcommittee and the superintendent revisit and just level set where we are with that, okay? Thank you, I really appreciate the spirit of your comments and the comments that you did make.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any other comments? Nope. Okay, new business, I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clancy, who's so excited right now.
I am so excited. I am so excited to have our children here tonight, to our students. We thank you so much for coming tonight, and to the parents for bringing them tonight. Thank you very, very much. We know that this takes a big chunk of your evening out, but I have to tell you, Chairman Roscoe, I had the absolute best fortune ever to be asked to go over and watch their drone flying.
So, one second, this is the Mary Rollinson drone presentation?
It is, thank you. And so, I can't remember, I think it maybe might have been Cindy Larson, actually, who had mentioned, you know, "We've got a couple of dates coming up, do you wanna come, come over and watch us?" And I did, and I was so excited to watch you do what you're going to do tonight. And I came back and I said to Chairman Roscoe, "We've just gotta bring these kids in and show us the work that you're doing. It is so exciting." And Sandy's here somewhere, where's Sandy?
Thank you.
Yes, Sandy, thank you. So, Sandy, I'm gonna ask you to do a bit of a tee-up, and of course, your principal is here, Mr. O'Shea, so we wanna, I'm gonna turn it over to you in half a minute here, but to our students, you're doing such exciting things with your work with this. It was so cool, and I thank you so much for everything that you're doing. So, Mr. O'Shea, we're gonna turn it over to you to tee it up and introduce Sandy, thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity, it's very exciting. It's a lot of work, not just on the teachers' part, or this is Sandy Edmond, our computer teacher, but also the classroom teachers and our parents. Some of the parents actually here volunteered their time on a regular basis to come in to make this project work. And this is just what we want. When we talk about 21st century learning, there's programming going on here, there's science going on here, there's collaborative working. So, there are a lot, it's not just one thing or another, but that happened during this project, and it continues to, what you'll see later is some of the work that children are still continuing to work on. But it really made possible by Sandy, who last year had to apply to be a PBS educator, and it was a very selective process, and became one this summer. And through that, found some activities and collaborative, across collaboration with science, and brought it to the fifth grade team, and as a result, you'll see this project that worked on the collapse of bee colonies and how to pollinate. So, with that, we're also very lucky to have Oliver Stevens, Melissa Olivera, Sophia Tasette, and Michael Bisteri here. So, thank you very much. And Erin Keeney is in the back room, she's a fifth grade teacher who works on science. And Holly Berry can't be here tonight, but she's the other science teacher who collaborated on this project. So, go ahead, and Cynthia Larson is a great resource in all of this too, so they kind of marshaled all of the district's resources together.
That's for sure. Okay, good evening, everybody. So, yes, I did attend a webinar in the summer, part of the PBS, and I saw this project. Somebody down in Florida, a teacher, was doing it with a very small group of students, about 15 students. And I thought, is there any way we could do this? Because it just seemed to encapsulate everything that we were learning, and it's a very nice project-based, trying to solve a real-life problem. And so, I saw Erin at the end of August, and I said to her, "What do you think?" And she said, "Yeah, let's do it," and it was, it was just wonderful. So, um, so physically, I just wanted to quickly tell you what the different parts were. So, in their classrooms, they were learning about the importance of bees, what is colony collapse disorder, and what might be causing it, because it's kind of an unknown at the moment, and there's different theories of what could be causing it. And then, how people are coping with this. I mean, we, so a lot of this is all coming off of PBS little snippets of videos, so some of it's coming from NOVA, some of it's coming from some of their other programs. And one of the things we saw was, in a place in China where the bees have disappeared, and they grow pears, like their pear trees are their financial or economic base, they actually have people hand pollinating. They're going up into these trees with feathers and pollinating the flowers themselves. So, it's such a serious problem. So, also in their classrooms, they, Erin maybe can speak a bit about this, but they created science notebooks, and they actually designed pollinators, so this is one of them. And they, they did all kinds of testing of, you know, what would pick up our pollen. So, like, the poles we used on our flowers were actually made out of purple chalk, but in their classroom, they used baking soda. So, um, okay, so, and then, while all that was going on in their classroom, in the lab, we were looking at an app called the Tinker App, it's on the iPad, and it actually first lets you try to program virtual drones. So, that was great for us, because we get, you know, we got familiar with the commands. It's all done in block coding, which we have a lot of experience with block coding, because we use it in, you know, starting in grades like 2, 3, 4, during the hour of code, we're all doing block coding. But, but of course, with the drones, there's different types of commands, so that gave us that. And then, we saw a really great NOVA video about what they were doing in Harvard, where they were actually, Harvard scientists are actually looking at drones, little teeny-tiny ones, and figuring out how they can make these drones pollinate as a solution. So, we kinda took that a little bit step further and started looking at these very lightweight pear drones. Like I was telling one of the parents, they're not outdoor drones, like indoor and outdoor cats, they're definitely indoor, because these things can be blown off with even a draft. So, but anyways, we had these drones, and we talked about how to handle them, how to make sure we're holding them correctly, so when they're on, we're not, you know, if the colors are going, we're not gonna get injured. And then, we started, you know, they started collaborating, they were all put into groups. So, we did this with, with our four classes, so that's a lot of, I think it was 18 groups of five to six students in each group. So, they were collaborating on the design of the program, and then we started, we had these two classes per, well, we had two computer classes in the cafeteria, where we actually had a lot of parent volunteers, we had staff volunteers that came in and worked with the kids, and actually made runs, basically that engineering design process, where you, you know, test, reevaluate, redesign, until we got the program as best as we could to get to the flower and get some of that all in off of it. So, um, okay, so, like I said, so, what I'm showing you now is a little bit of student work, and the kids are gonna come up and talk about their, they each have one slide in here that they're gonna talk about. You know, all of them have been making these multimedia presentations. I'm telling you, the multimedia presentation for one group is about 14 slides long. So, this is just a teeny-tiny snippet. You'll see that they've chosen different backgrounds and different ways that they're showing their work, but, so, guys ready? Melissa, you're up first.
So, today I have a slide on why bees are important, and I have four reasons of why they are, and one is that we make our fruits by pollinating such as grapes, blueberries, and strawberries. And I personally love grapes, so if I didn't, so if bees didn't really exist, I wouldn't have, we wouldn't have grapes. And another reason is they help keep, keep the flowers that we see almost every day alive for pollinating, such as daisies, and, yeah. And the third reason is that they help keep our crops alive by pollinating such as wheat, which makes cereal. The fourth one is that they make half of the food we eat by pollinating, like ham, cheese, dairy products.
Thank you.
In our, in our drone project, we use the engineering design process to help us build our pollinators. And the problem that we were faced was that we had to make pollinators that meant the way bees pollinate flowers. So, the way we did that is we researched by watching videos on, on the robo-bees and actual bees, and we also looked at different materials that might help us with our pollinators. Then we, then we split up into different groups and brainstormed different ideas we had, and then we built our, and then we built the designs that we thought would be best. After that, we got to do the fun part, where we got to fly it around the cafeteria, 'cause you don't get to do that every day. And, and we would write down our results, and that's how we redesigned it, because we would take the information that we had, and we would tweak the coding, or maybe just adjust the pollinator a little bit, so that the next round would be better. And after a lot of trial and error, we succeeded, and we shared our results with the rest of the class.
Nice job, thank you.
So, the way we designed our, or the pollinator that we used in this example, we used a long piece of string connected to a cotton ball, and in our test, we discovered that the cotton ball would be the easiest object to attach to the string, which meant that it would hold on better, and when it picked up the pollen, it wouldn't like pull off or anything. And then, the cotton ball also, we used the cotton ball because it resulted in easily picking up the pollen with little guidance, so we figured if it touched it, other materials sometimes wouldn't even pick it up, but the cotton ball did, so.
Thank you.
This is our process of our testing and the results. So, our final test forms were getting better, because we had observed the previous one and figured out what in the code we got right, what didn't work, and what was, what was right, but not quite. And then, we, by using our notes, we found out what was wrong, and they changed us to that, as in the last one, so, what was wrong, we got a few scrapped, and sometimes we replaced it, sometimes we didn't. And then, at the end, we reset it almost every time after a fifth run, although some of it just got so frustratingly close, but not quite.
Thank you, lovely, lovely work.
This video shows how we used programming to get the drone to the flower and back to the starting position. And the cotton ball connected to the drone in this video managed to pick up the pollen and, that was on the flower, and then fly back to the starting position with our programming.
We can see it flying. We don't have the sound on, but when that hit the flower, there's screaming.
So, we wanted to include this video, because it's really hard to get something like that to happen. And, you know, we took that program, we've taken the same drone and the pollinator, and we're gonna do a simulation of it right now. So, when we did this in the, in the cafeteria, everybody had a rule. So, we had somebody that, you know, held the drone, was always, you know, watching, making sure that the drone wasn't just left on the floor somewhere, and that tonight is gonna be all over now. What happened was, the kids took turns, so we rotated through this, so if he was on the first run, if he was the drone holder, he'd be something else on the second run. But for tonight, we're just doing one run. We had somebody that was videotaping, oh, you have it already, that was videotaping all our runs, so that we had a lot of video when we go to make our presentations, they have all their runs, and they can pick the best one. We had somebody that's recording all the information, what's going on, and then, basically, they do a run, then they get together and say, "What happened, and what can we change?" And then, we have the person who actually pressed the button to say, "Go." And one of the things that they included in their program, this is what the program looks like, is they have an emergency stop. So, if it starts going too high, like it's gonna hit one of the water sprinkler system, or if it's going towards somebody, they can hit this button, and it just loses power and falls. So, Sophia is gonna be the programmer on this run, and Oliver, please hold the drone properly. So, these, the way Tinker works, which is great, is it lets you pair the device, one iPod, two, or one iPad to one drone. So, that's how we were able to run five drones at the same time. We all paired a different iPads, so this one, so, yeah, just, okay. Is that like, is that a rescue?
Actually, exactly.
Do you wanna move the flower to the center?
Yeah. How about if I move this?
Yeah, I think giving it the biggest of perks.
We're a little bit nervous.
Don't be nervous, you know more about this than we do.
All right, and what about this, should we do it straight? I just. All right, okay, you ready? All right, Sophia, get ready to hit that emergency button if you have to. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, emergency? I knew that was gonna happen.
Yeah, I was a little bit worried about that.
Yep. Try one more time.
Don't, it go. Oh, it actually got stuck in it.
I'm a little bit worried about that.
Oh, crap.
Well, we had video. Welcome to the real world. You know, if it's tangled, I think we're gonna have to...
Okay, we're almost done.
Please stand by.
All right, sorry, we'll try it one more time, and we'll go. Okay, go ahead. Oh, see you, huh? Yeah, we don't know why that happened. Okay, I guess that's it, right?
Yeah.
You guys' desserts, wow, one of the presentations, that was impressive.
Chairman Roscoe, can I just make a couple of comments? Things that I noted when I was there that day, to be honest with you, I didn't see any of this, because everything I saw was flying, everything. And, you know, what I loved about the work that you all did, and parents too, were the number of parents that were on-site that day helping, and I mean, I was there just once, you did this throughout. And so, the number of parents who were there to support and, and just be there and encourage and nurture and just help was just amazing. The other thing I would say, I think, Sandy, you teed it up so nicely when you talked to your, to the students, I loved watching your level of collaboration with each other. That was so cool. And how, and I'm not sure who explained it, but you did such a nice job of taking a look at what happened, and then you would always regroup and say, "What can we do better? How can we do..." and you redid it, and for somebody that was just, like me, just standing there watching, you were amazing. You were just amazing. And I'm so appreciative of you coming in tonight, and the presentation that you did was lovely, and we thank you so much. And just even seeing what that drone looks like, and for the school committee, if you can imagine a cafeteria where there were all kinds of these flying everywhere, it was so, the energy in the room was just amazing. So, students, we thank you so much, or keep up the great work, we're so proud of you, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, well, bring more of those.
I know, isn't that exciting?
I've got a request, is it okay with you to let the next two items? Day, because I think Cindy's related to that. Cindy, you wanna come up?
Yes. Come up there.
Start for...
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, thank you, Sean.
On March 10th, on Friday, we had our full day of PD for the last few years. We tried to make it choice, and bring a variety of things in for people. So, it was located at the Lutherburg Middle School. We had 420 participants, we ran 60 sessions with 37 presenters, and we had two hosted tours that went to Boston. We started at 7:30 a.m., and we had three two-hour sessions throughout the day with lunch in the middle. So, this is our continental breakfast, with all of our staff members enjoying a nice breakfast before they started their PD for the day. We had focus topics, social, emotional, that included mindfulness, teaching with the brain in mind, underage substance abuse, anxiety and school performance, and more. We had focus topics on digital learning, STEM, student engagement, curriculum resources, literacy, and we had MCAS training for grades four and eight, teachers that were doing computer-based testing. We had, and the physical education teachers were so happy this year, this was a four-hour PD for them, they were on their feet almost the whole time, and they were learning the basic fundamental movements of rugby. And they really felt like every minute of this was so worth their while, so they said it was the best PD they've had in years. So, that was, that was wonderful. And then, off-site, Patty O'Connor worked with the Edward M. Kennedy Institute in Massachusetts Archives, so that our teachers who wanted to could go have a free tour down there, that was all arranged. And at the same day, there was actually the Americans for the Arts National Conference, so some of the art teachers were going, and Teaching and Learning pulled together and decided we wanted to make it possible for all of our art teachers to go and spend our day together, and they did. So, that was great. Whoops, I'm gonna go back one. So, I just wanna say that a day like that takes a lot of collaboration, and I wanted to give a shout-out to custodial staff. This year, the head custodian, Peter Jervis?
Jervay.
Jervay, thank you, Sean. I spent about an hour and a half, two hours with him, walking the whole building, that he had never done this before, showing him all the rooms I was gonna use, you know, if this has 25 chairs and there's 30 people attending, then I need five more chairs in here, and I need this set up and that set up. And then, I finally got to the point where I had to tell him that the custodial staff had to go outside and direct parking, starting at 7 a.m., and of course, they worked in the snow, and just setting up the cafeteria, but every single room was perfectly set up. I had nothing to worry about, it was great. The bus, we got to use the Nishoba van, and Gary Kozlowski was our driver, he's our Sawyer Studies teacher, he loved it, and he drove down in the snow, and they made it. And Tom, who will make sure he had bag lunches for all of those teachers that traveled. And then, the outside presenters came from a combination of our STEM coordinator, ELA coordinator, Health and Wellness coordinator, and myself, and our early childhood coordinator. We had people coming from PBS Learning Media, we had people coming from, and I had a list that I called phone, lost it. Yeah, I did. That's okay. Where do we have them from?
ABC.
Esbit Valley Collaborative.
State Police.
State Police. Middlesex Partnership for Youth.
The Antiquarian Society.
The Antiquarian Society.
We have the former STEM director from D E S C.
Jake Foster.
Yes.
And the teachers were nervous. He must be some sort of a rock star because they were so excited that Jake Foster was coming.
I was so excited that he was there. That was awesome.
Yeah, I mean, we have the director, executive director of WGBH, so it was just great. And they knew each other, which is fun. The teacher's walking over there now. So, and all the teachers and administrative, Mary Rollinson, Lutherburg Bank, to offer up their building like that. And we really appreciate it. And of course, the tech staff, they were, you can't run something without the tech staff there to help all these presenters. Because we had 37 presenters, 16 of them are from outside of the district and had never been to the building before. So besides technology and helping everybody get connected up like we're connected up here tonight to present, I want to say a huge shout out to Lutherburg Middle School Student Guides. So they came in on their day off and volunteered. If we needed something, we needed a run, we needed someone, you know, that was lost, they needed the bathroom. These guys were everywhere and all you had to do was find one. So we have these t-shirts made for them. And on the back, everyone was told to look for the t-shirts that say, let me help you explore. Because it was a day of exploration.
Nice.
And that's, that's it.
Nice job, Cindy.
I just want to mention too, you know, it was just so well planned, so well organized. And I know just all the attention to detail, like honestly, even just driving in and having all those custodians out there greeting you as you drove into the parking lot. There were so many vehicles to park. I mean, it was, it was a huge deal. And feed and whatnot. It was huge. And I would agree, I think the, our Lancaster schools, oh my gosh, you just did an amazing job over there. So I was so proud of everything that happened onsite that day. And even the MCAS work that was done onsite that day, the MCAS 2.0 was amazing. So hats off to everyone involved. It was a fantastic day. So thank you so much, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Appreciate it. All righty. PD, the 10th, March, on Friday. Okay. So our next presentation is the LEAP grant. And Mr. O'Shea, Principal of Mary Rollinson, is gonna share some thoughts with us.
And Martina and Patty.
Our curriculum is, you gotta, I always get this wrong. Can you introduce?
Sure. So, thank you. So Sean O'Shea is principal, of course, at Mary Rollinson. Martina Kenyon is our director of STEM. She oversees all of that. And Patty is basically the director of ELA. And she does a lot of work with other things as well, ELL, social studies. She's kind of the go-to person for that kind of thing. And so this particular project started, I want to say maybe two years ago, Sean. And you know, it's, I just want to just do the definition here. What is LEAP? Because you see LEAP and you're not exactly sure what that is. LEAP is a collection of ESEs, that's a department, districts, agencies, and collaboratives with a goal to reduce disproportionate special education identification and substantially separate placement of students of low-income families. And so that's really the thrust of it. We received money into Neshoba last year and again this year for grant, for work very specific to this. So Sean, I'll let you take it from here. And if Patty and Martina have anything else to add, that would be great.
Yep. We'll just kind of go through this very quickly.
You see?
Yep.
Is this in the way?
No, no, I have it here too. Not that I need it because it's been a couple of years project. So, and I talked about this last year at the board briefly. I had the nice chance of speaking at the Department of Education. That was kind of frightening to this project. Because in the past, what the state has done is they've, they went and had researchers, Dr. Hare, look at how do we make all children successful? And they started looking at poverty and low income. And through his research, he found that students that live in poverty are one and a half times more likely to be referred for special education than their peers. So that also brought up some districts identified at a higher rate than that. And that's how Neshoba became part of this, is that we, in Neshoba, were over identifying students almost three times more, so double the time of the state average. But in the past, and why I went to the board to speak is, in the past, a lot of times the department would identify an issue and say, go fix it. And really, this has been a collaboration. Instead of saying, this is an issue, they've identified 14 districts. This year, they've added about 10 more and said, let's work together. So it's really been a collaboration to try to identify and then find resources and strategies to, to help students succeed. And not to think that this is just a Neshoba issue. One thing that you can see on the website and we've learned is that students living in poverty has increased by almost 40% in every county of the state. It's not, when, you know, people's misperceptions that maybe it's an urban problem or a very rural problem. It has increased almost by 40% in every single county. So that is, you know, part of the learning curve for us here to say, we have students that need some of these services and we need to find ways to do this differently.
So Sean mentioned that the D E S C is trying to support districts to actually make progress with, with this. And they're doing that in a number of different ways. I think Brooke already mentioned that they've provided grant funding to districts who applied. And so we've received that this year and last year. Patty's gonna talk a little bit more about that. We've been able to use that to offer PD within our district. But then on top of that, when we first learned about sort of the data for our district, we were also offered the opportunity to attend trainings around cultural proficiency and also around teaching with poverty in mind. There's a gentleman named Eric Jensen who does a lot of work in this area. And the team from our district was able to actually go to workshop with him and receive the books that he wrote that have really been very informative to our work in the district. And we're able to bring that back, disseminate some of that within schools. I know Sean has done a lot of work at MRA too, as a result, because you participated in that professional development. And then we've also offered choice workshops throughout, through the last couple of years around the same areas of just really helping within our district, our, our staff and ourselves understand more about why this issue might arise.
So this year has been more of a continuation of what was done last year. So we've had a book study that was presented by a high school teacher that's been well-attended this year. And we're using some of our grant money to continue to bring in consultants to talk about brain-based learning and cultural proficiency. And the work that we're doing in June is more of a train-the-trainer model. So we have a couple of AB, Esbit Valley Regional, Esbit Valley consultants coming in. And they are providing the two-day training so that we can have in-house leadership continue the work the following year. So that's been exciting. And we're also getting a group, a team together, representatives from each of the schools, and starting to look at our STAT process, which is the Student Teacher Assistance Team. Because if that's the area where we were falling down, we really want to look at that process and make sure we tighten it up, but that we're identifying kids in a similar manner across the district. So those are some of the things that we're working on and will continue to work on next year.
Terrific. Any burning questions?
I just had one question on the program itself, just for clarification purposes. So you're not saying that there's an over-indexing of identified students, like students that maybe shouldn't be identified that have been identified? Or are you talking about more like an early intervention program to keep kids from falling down that track where they, they become special needs?
Both. So we were originally included in the LEAP initiative because students from low-income situations were qualifying at over three times rate, which is one and a half more than the state average. So right now, we want to step back and say, what can we do to intervene early, identify these type of issues, and, and help them succeed so they aren't falling into the special ed area or being identified with a disability.
Thank you.
Lynn, you have a question?
I'm wondering, and you've been doing this for two years, right? So the training is to identify them or to actually do something?
It's, so what the state wanted us to do is to be aware and then to start reflecting, like, why is this happening? The state doesn't have an answer.
Okay. So kind of tracking it now, seeking a commonality?
Exactly. And we're starting, and they've set up things so we can talk with other districts to see what they're doing and how they're addressing it. And we can start to look at some data, because there's no like baseline data to look at that. And like the Eric Jensen training, so Eric Jensen is, he's a national presenter and like usually has things in the summer in Texas. It's hard to get to, but you know, they brought him in and we were able to send a team. And then we've used that to, you know, provide the basis of trainings across the district. So it's kind of, it's not like, like the math initiative where it's this big push. It's, it's trickling out and starting to, you know, come together.
Okay, so it's just basic, but the green-based learning that you're doing with the book study? Who is doing that? Like, is it just teachers that are doing that? Or is that, or students also?
It's being facilitated by a participant that was in Sean's class, if you want to talk about that.
So we did trainings, like a year ago at that option day, we did PD day, we did trainings there. And we did a summer workshop. And, and then those teachers have gone back to their buildings and started to, you know, train their colleagues. Maureen Principay, I believe it is, at the high school, took that even further and has done a bigger book study in similar in the high school. So it's for staff. So it's really getting staff to be aware of, you know, different learning strategies and, and how to approach learning differently.
Okay. And then the training that you're having with the PD, when you bring in the AB consultants, I guess in June, is that mandatory or is that all volunteer?
It'll be volunteer.
Optional.
Yeah.
It's optional. So how do you, how do you make, because it sounds like, when you talk about cultural efficiency and everything, it almost sounds like, you know, these kids that are in there, they're in every class. It isn't just they're all together. So I would think that all teachers in all schools would need to have some knowledge of some of this. So how do you get it out to the teachers and pique their interest?
I think Sean's got an answer.
Well, I mean, that's why we, the trainings we've been doing, we've been getting teachers from every school and then kind of giving them the base to go back and start the conversations. You know, it's not to start another full-scale initiative and train, but to kind of grow it from the roots up. And that's why, you know, fundamentally, starting to look at our, our student assistant process and how we do RTI and identifying learning strategies and, you know, that will help facilitate the conversation.
It sounds like a cultural influence. That's what it sounds like. And it, actually, that's the best way to influence, right?
And some of it's embedded in staff meetings. Part of the work is around mindsets. And I know that each of the schools are embedding that work in their staff meetings. So everyone is slowly getting exposure to the work.
Okay. Because it sounds also like it's dovetailing with the SEL stuff.
Yes.
Well, I think that's the point, right?
Yes, it all comes together.
Yeah. That's great. That actually, that sounds trite. My comment sounds trite, but that's encouraging, exciting, and yes, more.
And how do you measure that?
And how do you measure that?
Because you're saying right now, we're, we're three times the average. Or more than double the average.
So, so right, working with the special ed departments and now start to look at, you know, like our, those numbers, you know, starting to look at those together.
Because somehow they're measuring that and I guess we just have less numbers, right? At that point?
Well, I think it's gonna take some time, right? It's not a quick hit.
Hopefully, our, our numbers will shift and we'll have a more appropriate proportion, similar to what the state is using. Because right now, we're above the state in our identification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. I'm gonna take the next, I'm gonna jump over this one and take the next two, oh, three. We've got three overnight trip approvals, which is actually kind of exciting. So I'm gonna turn it. No, you've got three because there was one added for basketball since they just won.
Oh, you know what?
Well, you were in a meeting when that came through. Tim, you just sent it out.
Say, "won!"
Do you need it?
So.
So we're gonna turn it over to Perry.
Also, Dr. Graham, come on up and tell us about the overnights.
It was a last-minute addition.
So.
That's kind of an exciting last-minute addition.
It was very exciting.
Tanya Rich asked me to come on her behalf and mentioned that we had several overnights, one baseball and then the basketball, just most recently since we won two months ago. And are going to the state finals for the first time ever. Very exciting. Which includes an overnight Friday night, the team goes down Friday to Springfield, stays overnight, and then plays on Saturday. I don't know if you have the paperwork for the.
I do.
Basketball one, but I brought that.
Oh, do I?
And I think you might have the other ones.
I do.
No, you have all three.
I have all three.
Okay.
So we need votes. So do you want to go into, you want to, all right, so let me, Jennifer, you're gonna end up moving this for me. So we've got the varsity basketball group trip of 19 students, three chaperones to Springfield, Massachusetts. On March 17th and 18th, they'll be taking a bus. And this is to, the varsity boys' basketball team won the Division II Central Mass championship, then defeated Western Mass champs on Monday night. Neshoba now faces Brighton in the MIA Division II State Championship. It's a two-day experience. So I need someone to make a motion in order to allow this group of students to continue their good work.
Do you want to do it separately or all?
Robotics.
This one was basketball. If I can do them all together, I'll do them all together.
I think we can do them all together.
All right. And then the next one is the varsity baseball team. 24 students and six chaperones are going to the games at the Mashpee High School, staying at a hotel in Hyannis, March 24th to the 26th. The students will not miss any school because they leave after practice on Friday. The 24th, they've been invited to the Mashpee Baseball Jamboree. And the high school holds an invitational preseason jamboree for basketball teams. They'll be going down on a bus. And the third one is, I'm sorry, but this is just really tough to read. Oh, this is the robotics competition at Bryant University in Smithfield, Rhode Island for 24 students and six chaperones. And they are going March 24th and 26th. There's a lot going on. Finally, we get to some really fun stuff. So I need someone to make a motion in order to approve all three of these overnight field trips of students and their chaperones. Jennifer made the motion and a second, please?
A second.
Kathy and all those. Any questions?
Discussion.
Yes?
I just want to point out that there's a typo after please.
What?
Says please sue, and it would be please use.
Use.
We don't want anyone coming in.
Which one, Neil?
The robotics one, is it all of them?
It's all of them.
All of them. It's the generic form.
And I'm only pointing that out because I can. I'm gonna, can we amend to your motion to say that it's please use this word?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna make the edit right on here and I'll initial it. All right. Neil, thank him for the catch.
We should cut that a little bit earlier.
And Dr. Graham, can we get that one fixed on the master?
100% get that one fixed.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Good luck, everyone. Thank you so much. I will sign those. Okay. So the next item, Neil, good catch. The next item on the agenda is the Wilder Culvert Discussion. So I'm gonna set this up and then I'm gonna turn it over. The Wilder Road Culvert is a Bolton-specific situation. The reason it has come up to the school committee is because the culvert is in failure. The culvert is in imminent failure, according to the DPW director in Bolton. The culvert is like a bridge. We have buses, both sped and regular buses, large yellow buses, traveling the culvert. There've been a couple of engineers, the bus safety director came out and looked at it. Superintendent Clenchey and I went out and looked at it. And the reason that it's come here is because this culvert was slated to be fixed. As of last May, the town approved the funds to fix the culvert. It hasn't been fixed. It's been delayed a few times. And now that the culvert poses a potential risk from both the DPW, the engineers from these outside firms, the bus company, and the chief of police in Bolton, in order to have it fixed, it has to go out to bid. That's gonna take some time. It won't even be able to get done until after the school year. So we're kind of in a bad spot from the district's perspective because we've got school buses going over that culvert with kids and we can't take any chances. The superintendent and I have talked about it. Neil, the superintendent and I, because we're the Bolton reps, so the reason that it's come to you is because there are going to be some implications with bus routes and cost. So I'm gonna ask Don Lowe, who's here, he is the town administrator for Bolton, to kind of do. to kind of do a quick setup for us. Come on up to the table, Mr. Low. And then, once you give us the overview of what the situation is, I'm gonna ask Superintendent Clenchey, who's done a lot of work, um, with the bus company and the town, to figure out how we can resolve this and keep everybody safe.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I think the Superintendent Clenchey and I have been in fairly constant contact, so, um, she knows pretty much everything I know right now because I've told her everything I know.
So, that being said, um, now the chairman is correct.
There were, I was informed that there were two safety experts from the bus company that ca- that came out and personally looked at the culvert. And the reaction was quite negative and a statement was made that they had seriously, serious concerns about the, uh, buses continuing to go over the culvert. And Superintendent Clenchey this afternoon was good enough to give me the contact information for one of them, um, I believe, I'm not certain, but I believe it was the safety expert's supervisor. Um, that there are two people involved. I don't, wasn't sure who worked for who, but they were both very much involved with safety and one of them is a safety expert. And she told me that they went out and looked at the culvert, went underneath the culvert and definitely had concerns, um, and serious concerns about whether or not the buses should still be traveling over that road, over the culvert. And, um, and she and I both agreed with what the DPW director has said, which is at this point, as we sit here right now, we don't have serious concerns because there's frost in the ground. As long as we have frost, we're okay. You know, it's not perfect, but it, but it's okay. We don't have grave considera- grave concern. Once the melting thawing process starts, we have concerns because then everything softens up and things are gonna start moving potentially. And once the rains start, that really causes us some concerns. So, uh, the DPW director and I have been, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We had several talks again today. And the conclusion was that, um, once the thaw cycle starts, uh, it's his opinion that we will need to, we will need to close Wilder Road at that point from down the low Old Bay up to above Sampson. And it, through traffic, local people, uh, people who live there will be able to get to their homes and so forth, but there'll be no through-traffic allowed because of the culvert. Uh, and we'll have Jersey barriers and the like up that we'll be renting. Um, having said that, I mean, people have talked about, well, what about steel plates? Why can't we put steel plates there? Steel plates work well in, uh, in situations where it's relatively flat. And, uh, if, if we had a flat area there, you know, we'd get a couple of twenty-inch steel plates and we'd probably be okay. Wouldn't be perfect, but it would probably be okay. Um, fact is, we've got, if anybody who's looked at it has seen, we have, um, whatever I wanna call them, depressions in the road. We have nothing close to a flat area. Um, he's not comfortable that he can secure them there. The other option would be to, uh, to be able to use the steel plates effectively, we would have to remove the top layer of asphalt, uh, seat the plates properly and then put out, put fresh asphalt back over them. And asphalt plants aren't open till April, sometime in April. Won't be first week of April, probably. So, the only other alternative, well, they have two alternatives. We'll either leave the road open and take a chance or, um, close the road. And in case anyone's wondering, there are two people in town, in this town, I think pretty much it's the same in every town, uh, who have the authority to close the road. It's the DPW director and the chief of police. And I'm very comfortable saying the chief of police would concur from a safety perspective that closing the road is reasonable. He, he hasn't said that to me yet, but he, at the site visit last week, he was expressing serious concerns. He said he can see that the road is continuing, the depression is continuing, um, sink, oops. I was just gonna say sinking is not the right word, but I just did. And so see, it can happen at any time, but no, no. So that being said, um, uh, the DPW director feels there's no choice and I support his decision. Um, he's the expert. I think we should be listening to our experts. So, um, again, it's not tomorrow, but when we start seeing, you know, high forties and the fifties and things starting to warm up, that's when, that's when things get more serious. And, uh, we will be coordinating with the superintendent. Um, Harold will be communicating with me, will have a nice flow. Carol, Harold will be communicating with me. I intern will be responsible for communicating with the superintendent. We should, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna steal any of the superintendent's thunder about her and... But, uh, we will make sure that there's proper notice.
So, so, thank you for that. So, again, this is the only reason it's here is because we now have to do something, right? We've gotta do something with the students on the bus, the regular buses and the sped buses. Uh, I don't want this to go into a political realm because our role is not any town's politics. In fact, I don't want anything to do with any town's politics. Um, but I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey to talk about what she's done, what the options are. And one of the questions that I'm gonna have when you're done is, how do we let, I mean, the town's gonna have to let the residents know, but how are we letting parents know what the potential impacts are to them? And the reason I'm asking that is, it, we don't know when this is gonna happen. We don't know when this thaw may start. I'd rather like not wait until it starts to thaw. Um, and so it could impact kids and families really quickly and will they need time to prepare, so?
So a couple of quick things. I, I just wanna, um, certainly affirm everything that, that Mr. Low has said. There's been outstanding back and forth communication between the town and the school district, uh, for the last several weeks, actually. And, um, I know that the day that I had called and said, can we all meet down at the culvert? And I was so glad that our chief went down that day. And Jennifer, you, we just finished up a, a finance subcommittee meeting and you came, you dragged along with us and thank you for doing that. And, and I was so glad to have the chief there because he actually had, ended up having to help the traffic because there were, there was a group of us, uh, the gentleman who abuts, uh, whose line of butts also came down, uh, to, to visit with us for, for a bit. And so there were all these people and the traffic flow was just incredible. And, uh, big trucks, like big oil trucks, big dump trucks, big, like, big vehicles.
Big t- wheelers, yeah.
Yes, like there was, you know, because of course it's a, it's a cut-through, right? For Clinton and Lancaster. And so there, it was so nice to have the chief there because I don't know, like, in hindsight, if we could've had that meeting out there without him. Um, he and I had talked beforehand, before we even went out, about his take on it in, in terms of safety. And I agree with you. I, I think from my lens, there's nothing political about this because for me, it's just, and Don, you and I have had this discussion, it's just for the safety of the kids.
That's right. Town administrators and superintendents stay out of the politics.
We stay out of the politics, that's exactly right. So it's just, we've got this issue here, what's, what's it gonna look like to deal with now? So the, the bus company has also been outstanding to deal with. So we've had some really good communication with them. I've had, uh, a couple of meetings and several conversations on the phone. You have as well now. So I think that the communication flow has been very, very good on all of this. So kind of where we land, a couple of key salient points that I think we just need to be aware of. Um, we've got eight buses that run empty along that strip, uh, you know, that just, and there really are stow buses, to be honest with you, and to avoid the 117, they just do this cut. So there are eight empty buses. Now, if you start thinking about the amount of weight, and I said that to Don last week, you know, what, what's gonna be the tipping point when that, when that thaw comes and whatever hits it, you know? Because the weight of these vehicles that are traveling it. So I believe the bus company is also re-diverting immediately all of those eight buses. We have a number of special education buses or vans that, that, uh, go across as well. We're monitoring that. I don't have the numbers tonight for that, but I will have them tomorrow morning. The, uh, the concern, of course, is we have two major buses that travel and one bus has seventy-one children. That, that's a lot of children when you think about, again, the weight of that on that culvert and such. So, uh, from my lens, when, when we took a look at it and we said, okay, so what are options here? The bus company today and working with our team, because we actually have a, a team of staff that have been working on this with me, um, it looks to me, and Neil, if poke holes in my thinking here outside of this venue possibly, if, but this is what we're looking at right now because I know you know the road well. But the, I'll refer to it as those, those, uh, students that are on the other side of the culvert and then those students are on this side between here and 117. And so we kind of break it up. The students on the other side of that culvert will be able to continue with like a, a regular bus run. It's just that they won't be driving down the culvert anymore. They'll just be, um, kind of rerouting and redirecting and going over Old Bay.
Old Bay.
Yeah, and then down, right? And so I think, I think that we're okay with that. Our, our other issue comes with the, the students that are on this side of the culvert, between 117 and the culvert. We have about thirteen students that we pick up, so that's gonna mean, uh, two, uh, at least two vans right now. So we've made contact with Assabat Valley Collaborative, who is, uh, that's our company that we use, that, that's kind of our intermediary for van pool. Because our own bus company does not have vans and they don't have drivers that they can give us either. So reaching out to Assabat Valley Collaborative, and, and Don and I had this conversation late, uh, late this afternoon, it looks like it's gonna be around, the cost will be about three hundred and eighty dollars a day. So basically, just under four hundred dollars a day is what it's going to cost now to, to rent these two vans, to pick up these thirteen students and, and bring them in. So that's a cost that, you know, like Don and I have talked and he knows my, my view. Of course, I, I feel that Bolton should be picking up the tab on that. Uh, you know, when you take a look just in round numbers, I mean, if we do this between now and the end of the year, you're looking at about thirty thousand dollars, that's what, you know, uh, just the van cost. Not, that's not to rent all the things that you're gonna need to rent to close that road down, right? So just our side of it will, will be in that thirty thousand dollar mark. Unless you can get in there and get that work done lickety-split and we, you know, um...
For those pesky procurement laws.
Yes, I know, I know. And see, that's just it. I mean, I know the rules that were, and the regulations that we're up against. He, I don't think he can do it any sooner than probably the very first, uh, the very least, maybe early June. But with everything that has to go into play with this kind of a process, it takes time.
I can give you a bit of a calendar. First of all, I'd like to back up and say, while obviously I'm here tonight to focus on student safety and that's paramount, you know, I'm concerned about every, every person, every vehicle that goes over that road. It's not that I don't care about anybody who's not a child, you know? I care about everybody that was using that road. And that's really, that's my total focus. I, obviously I have to coordinate with the school district, but, um, I have to worry about, about the whole thing. Um, so the calendar that we're looking at right now, and this is, this is rough, but I thi- I think it's gonna be pretty, pretty accurate. We will be, the selectmen are meeting tomorrow night to vote on whether or not to, to begin the bid process. And I believe they will vote yes to go forward with the bid process. Uh, the DPW had all the bid documents ready to go. A byproduct from the site visit was, uh, the fellow from the state, Tim Chori, who took a look at it and ma- made, made a few very helpful suggestions relative to how we can improve stream flow and that type of thing. So we're thinking about, I mean, we're all thinking about the culvert, but we also have to think about the impact of the stream and, and wildlife. So we're incorporating those changes into the bid document, which are minimal. It's not going to impact the timeline at all. But that being said, uh, if we get approval from the selectmen tomorrow night, the sixteenth, which I believe we will, then what, the notice will appear in the central register on the twenty-ninth. We'll have four weeks for people to respond to the bids. So bids will be, the bid opening is scheduled for April twenty-fifth. And then, uh, we, we have to go through the, you know, confirming who the, uh, responsible and, and, um, responsive, responsible and responsible bidder is. And then we have to go through the whole bid award and all that, which should take a week. I mean, it's not that long. And then we can start the process because this is a pre-cast culvert, which does, which, they're not just on the shelf. It's a, it's an item that has to be manufactured per request. And no contractor is gonna put that order in until they have a signed contract and commitment to, and commitment of funds, which is what the signed contract does. We have a line that attests to the availability of funds. So once that's done, we believe it's gonna be about a five-week process to have the culvert ready and be delivered and be on-site. And then it's, you know, it, it's not an overly lengthy process to install the culvert. I'm not gonna say X number of days, but, but it, it, it's not a month, right? It's, it, I think the unit of measure is some number of days. It's not, and maybe, I don't thi- I don't see it lasting long, even two weeks if it's that, personally. And I think it's probably less. So, that being said, once, if, with the road being closed, you know, we don't have to take the view of, well, we're not gonna do it until school's over. Cause that's what we had been assuming was we'd be starting it between, we'd be doing it between July first and August fifteenth. The deadline to have it done was August fifteenth. They could start really whenever they wanted. So now, we will amend that with the road closing and, um, say that we will, that they can begin as early as, well, as early as they can get started effectively. So we don't want any waste of time with an arbitrary date or anything like that. So if we can get it done by the end of the first week of June, that's what we'll do. We just, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's gonna be done by the, by the end of the first week of June. You know, we, we will get it done as quickly as possible. Um, I think we've got every chance to have it done before July, but, you know, you, you don't know that.
Well, by that point, the cost has been incurred to reroute buses and...
Yes, but our costs remain and our co- for every day we have, we're renting things, the cost continues to go up. So I'm worried about that expense also. Um, and I will tell you that I'll be speaking with the advisory chair tomorrow. I'm hoping to speak with him tomorrow. And, and I'll be suggesting that we add an agenda item to next Tuesday's advisory meeting to discuss contingency plans for the culvert, which means, uh, a discussion regarding how the expenses of the school district are dealt with because that's not within the bounds of my contract to be able to do that. Uh, that, that's a board of selectmen issue to discuss with advisory as far as availability of funds. Um, so, but we will be addressing that. We will be addressing how we, how we pay for a few different things. Um, so it's my hope that we'll get to that Tuesday night.
So, before we take questions, how are we gonna let parents know?
Well, I said to Don, I think what I, what we wanted to do is to put it out there tonight to the school committee first, which is what we've done tonight. Um, my staff was actually ready to start to call parents today and I put them off. I said, no, we, we need to make sure that we've got all things ready. You know, we wanna, uh, do the preparation of a letter to go out. We'll probably, I think I can see us, because it's only thirteen parents on this side, I think we will make individual calls to those families just so that they, any additional questions they have. Uh, right now, if, if it, if it plays out how we think it will on the other side of the culvert, it won't be that much of a shift. It's, the only shift that's gonna be is how they come into the, to the district, you know? Just as opposed to the regular way. But having said that, we'll send something out, but it's not a, as much of a shift in terms of, uh, transporting like it is on this side of the culvert.
Is it gonna impact, pick up the drop-off time?
Right, we're, we're actually just looking into that right now. It's a great question because, um, and, and actually, we're, we're not so sure that it might not do something different because it, at first, my first reaction was, will it be longer? I was more concerned that it might be longer. And then the bus company said, you know, it might even be shorter because we're not picking up, we're picking up that many less kids and everything. So that's why we're not sure tonight as I sit here.
Okay.
Linda from the bus company did ask me if there would be any impact on their current route that comes up Sampson and then makes a left on Wilder to go down to 117. And I said, I said I see no reason why there should be any impact or not.
Okay, so Lynn, I'm gonna take Lynn's question first. She had her hand up before.
Well, I'm just wondering, um, you, you talked about the bus company and their safety person. Have they written anything saying that they won't go over that culvert?
No, not to my knowledge.
Well, well, so...
That wasn't something we were asking for.
And that's the other thing, what?
I, I don't, because the problem right now is, is the bus company, I mean, I mean, they're also involved in saving the children. So unless they have something in writing saying, we're not going across that culvert. Because again, I mean, the engineers have written things that have said that that culvert needs to be replaced.
Last May and last June, there were two engineering studies. Lynn, uh, Neil has them. I did it again. I flipped your letters.
Do you can read?
But, but those engineering studies concur that the culvert needed to be replaced. And there was never, well, as a Bolton resident, I think Neil could probably agree with this and there are people in the audience who might agree with it. Um, at last year's town meeting, I never anticipated that the approval of the residents unanimously to get this, that's not the only culvert, but for our purposes, that culvert fixed was gonna take a full year and degradation and everything else. So you've got two studies, you've got two studies that say the culvert needs to be fi- to be fixed.
Replaced.
What?
Replaced.
Replaced, replaced. You've got a third body from the state that came in and concurred. We've got safety issues. I don't think the question is, does it have to be done? I think the question is, what's gonna be the process and when? And we're not gonna have a discussion because this, this, this...
Well, that's just it. We're not, we're not the experts. So like, my question was, you've got written stuff...
You're holding the experts.
Yeah, but you know, again, you're basing it on, um, the fact that...
Experts?
That this happened after your town meeting.
Hmm?
These all happened after your town meeting last year. So was there, when you had the town meeting, whatever?
I, I'm not sure what your question is.
But here's...
Wait a minute, what, what's your question, Lynn?
Well, my, I, I can skip her question, I think. I think, if the town's gonna close the road, we need to make a plan.
Exactly.
We do.
But, but we, we can't say we have to close, that's not us to say.
No, 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 no! That's not the point!
There's something written somewhere from someone, whether it's the DPW or the bus company.
Oh, there will be!
But that, that has nothing to do with this table. Our, our, at our end, it's just a case of making sure that we've got a plan in place and ready to go.
Right. And I mean...
That's, that's your question, right?
We are incurring the cost, which we can't do.
We may not be incurring the cost. I think that's what the superintendent is gonna be talking to the town about, and the town administrator is bringing to advisory next week.
And, and I would just like to say, I mean, I, I mean, our opinion, and I say our, it's Harold and mine, that we've, that we're okay until we start to experience the melt slash thaw. Um, if the school district isn't comfortable waiting for that, if the school committee isn't comfortable waiting for that, that's an issue for you folks. But it's, but from, from my perspective, you know, um, I've been looking at trying to coordinate as much as possible with, with the superintendent to kinda choreograph it, I guess is a good way to put it. As all the experts say, as long as we've got, you know, good solid frost on the ground, we don't have anything to worry about.
They say it, but are they putting it in writing?
She's worried about liability, um...
Well, so am I.
Well...
So I don't get the problem.
Well, no, I just, if, if the DPW is gonna close it, and the, and the, um, bus company is saying they won't drive over it, I'd like them writing.
Well, that's between the district and the bus company.
Because at that point, then, yeah, we have to reroute.
Well, we are gonna reroute. I mean, I think the bottom line is we're gonna reroute.
If the town closes it, we have to reroute.
Right.
We don't have a choice.
Right, exactly.
And it sounds like the town is notifying us that they are going to close the road.
Right.
We just don't know when they plan to close this.
Right. But, you know, Dawn and I were talking about that, we'll, and I think you just used a very nice word, we'll choreograph it, so that we, you know, we're, we're in sync with it.
Any other questions? Comments?
I think no comments other than, thank you.
Thank you is right. This has been a long process.
Yeah, it's been.
All right, so you'll keep us posted, um, on the whole effort.
Yep.
Thanks for coming, appreciate your time and your collaboration. Okay. The next item is the review and discussion of policy ADA one, and I'm so glad, are we gonna talk about this?
Well, we didn't meet before, because it, it would've just been me.
But Anne Marie is here to talk about it, so she can...
So why don't we at least set up why this is even on the agenda, and if something needs to be done, we can do that at the next meeting? 'Cause this has been one that we've gotten a lot of questions about, Jennifer has, you have?
Yep, yep. Is Anne Marie going to do that?
Certainly Anne Marie can tee up whatever you want.
Okay, well, oh.
No, oh, go ahead, Susan, set it up.
No, we, we just, we, this was one of the policies that we talked to Dorothy about, because it was in, in the first section. Um, and there was, there weren't many changes as far as the language went. I, I think that the problem that we've been faced with is the interpretation of the language. Um, and I know that Anne Marie had come to a policy meeting in November, and it came up, um, about fingerprinting for the overnight field trips, I think specifically was what, yeah, um, and, and so there's, but there's also, since then, there've been some di- issues about the, the, that, um, the may versus shall. So, um, you know, trying to kind of determine whether or not it, it's a must versus a could kind of thing.
So this is, this is, but pe- for people who are listening, this is the policy on fingerprinting. And Lynn, I know that's been one of your hot buttons for years, so you should be really interested in hearing the rest of this. Okay.
I think we just have to decide, I mean, the language is the language.
Right.
So we just have to decide what, whether we wanna add parameters in for, for, like, if we, we take the may out and just decide as a district what the, what, you know, when people must be fingerprinted, or if we leave it open-ended, and, and that was a discussion we were gonna have in the policy subcommittee meeting, that's been pushed to next week.
So you must have perspective.
Well, yeah, and I, and I think too, that there were some words missing in, in one of the first lines, which I think just added to the confusion of that policy. And, and once you kinda add those three, I think it's three words in there...
It is.
It all makes sense, it's like, oh! So I, I don't know, as Anne Marie and I had this discussion, I don't know whether it was a typo, I don't know whether something just got lost, and, and, you know, like, putting the policy together, we're not exactly sure what happened, but I think that will certainly clean some things up. So, Anne Marie, do you wanna just speak a little bit about it from your perspective?
Sure, sure. There were, there were two parts of the whole, um, effort to keep, um, the people who would be harmful to our children away. Excuse me, the first is the, the quarry, that's Massachusetts only, that's not, that's not tonight's discussion. That's quick, it's easy, and it's free. So everybody has that, volunteers, employees, everybody has the quarry. There was, um, concern back like 2013, 2012, that Massachusetts was only one of three or four maybe states who didn't do a national criminal history check, so there was concern that all the perps would be coming to Massachusetts and those other couple of states, because if we just ran Massachusetts and their offenses were in Nevada, well, okay, and they, we, they wouldn't be disclosed. So that's how this came about. So the way that the statute was written is exactly what our policy says, and that says for employees, no question, they have to be fingerprinted. But the statute says, and our policy says, once you fix that little typo, that, um, whether a volunteer needs to be fingerprinted or not, that's at the discretion of the school committee and the superintendent. So whether we put some parameters on, on that or not is, I think, the question that you all need to answer.
It, yeah, it's, if I could just, it, so it's the, at, the way the policy reads is that the discretion of the school committee, the superintendent, or a principal.
That's right.
Yeah, so it'd be any of the three, and I think that maybe a little too many...
Too many chefs in the kitchen. And I think that that's another piece, is I think what we need to do is decide that what, what we're gonna do, and, and it varies, like, when we sit down as a group of principals and had this discussion on this policy, it was clear, it was all over the board. So we need some consistency across the district, but we need a really tight policy with clear parameters and good understanding with everybody.
And the part of, part of it too, that you have to remember is, part of it is an equity issue, you know, to get the fingerprints, it costs, it's thirty-five dollars and the parents have to pay that. Um, plus it's, uh, you have to go to the place and actually bring your fingers, you know, to be printed. So, um, if you're ever either economically disadvantaged, or if you're time-challenged, as most busy families are, really, it's a disincentive for people to come in...
Get involved in the schools.
To get involved in the schools, and that's exactly what we don't want.
Right!
So...
So Lynn, I'm gonna let Lynn have her day, because this is, and respectfully so, this has been one of her hot buttons for a couple of years.
We, I mean, we have lost a lot of volunteers. They just felt it was way too invasive, and they, they had no time. And it, it was, it was, it was bad. And then now on the flip side, we've got teachers saying they have no help. You know, and, and it just, it's difficult, we were pushing them out, so if we can get rid of, I don't wanna get rid of totally, but, like, 'cause overnight makes sense, but, um, yeah.
I think we can put some nice, common sense parameters in this and make it work for all of us, I really do. I just don't think it's going to be that difficult for us to do.
Are the, are the principals involved? Because I know that even when you look up on the, um, the website, every single school says something a little bit different. And when the parents that, that stopped volunteering, they said, you know, at first it said, "We're thinking about it," then it was, "You have to do it by law," and then it was, "Well, we have to do it 'cause the superintendent said to," or, "No, we have to do it 'cause the, the school committee said you had to."
Which is why we need, we need to tighten this policy up, and the super, and the principals all know that this is an issue. So I think that, that's why we're asking tonight, we wanna put a push on this policy, we wanna get it cleaned up right away.
So are we gonna be changing the website soon?
Well, once, once they come...
We can't do that until the policy brings it forward.
Policy has to bring it to us, we vote on it, and then we can change it, but I think...
I guess I'm still a little unclear what the proposed changes would, would be, are you going to...
Well, I think we're, we're ready to sit down, have that discussion with you.
Yeah, you guys need to do that in policy.
We need to work that out in policy, and then bring it forward to school committee.
The websites at center, Mary Wollington and FSS, say, uh, requires the, the...
But it doesn't, but it doesn't say that for people who don't, it, it says, it, they may obtain, and we, I guess one of those is...
No, you can...
They may obtain the, the fingerprint, um, if you're direct and unmonitored contact with the children, and you're a volunteer. So, I mean, it's, yeah, so it doesn't say you have to have it, you may have it, and that's why...
So we may just need to put some more, um...
Define what the direct and...
Description around the intent.
Define that.
Just to clean it up.
Neil?
So just two quick things. So if all the states, except for like two or three, are they all as invasive as this, or do they have other formats, have they followed that, a less invasive...
They're all fingerprints.
Okay. So that's the first thing, and if we change it, and we've got something like may, I think we do need to change may, because, uh, I think that opens up to liability. Something happens, God forbid, right? May, you didn't do it, you should've, you know, boom.
And that's the state's option.
Well, we need to have something clear-cut in policy where it reflects on it.
Okay, so it's, so this discussion is gonna go back to policy, and Anne Marie and Superintendent Clench are gonna work with you, and you're gonna come back to us. Yeah, I understand. Okay.
Great.
But I just want to make sure everybody, thanks for coming, and Anne Marie, I just wanna make sure everybody here knows that this, this little snafu that's been driving everybody nuts is gonna be resolved. I know. And good for you for not giving up. Okay. So, um, now we're gonna move into old business, the, uh, two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year calendar. Um, and one of the topics is late starts, um, because I know that we asked Dr. Graham to go, um, look at how the late starts reinforce support student achievement, but there were also a couple of things, and I guess Anne Marie, you need to come back.
Yep.
On the calendar, I received an email from a resident, and I forwarded that to you who had concerns about, um, placement of, um, the, the PD days and days off relative to observation of Jewish holidays.
That's right.
So I don't, and I think you got back to that resident after sharing some information, but, um, if there's, this is the night, folks, that we need to, to make our decision on the school calendar, so if you have any other concerns or questions, you gotta bring it up now.
So what was the answer on that?
And I'm gonna turn it over to Anne Marie right now.
Sure. We, um, we talked about the Jewish holidays, and especially on, we found some March, I think thirtieth, potentially having that as the full-day professional development date, because that happens to be in next year's calendar, both Passover and the Good Friday. So I thought, hey, if we had that day off, you know, a lot of people, that helps, but there were a couple of things. We tried very, very hard to have a big block of solid instructional time before the, before the MCAS. We tried to keep March as clean, as clean as we could, that was the first thing. The second thing is that we were concerned if it was Good Friday and Passover, that if we had full-day professional development, they might not have a large number of our staff, might decide for whatever reason that they wanted to be home celebrating, so that the PD might be wasted, and it's really our only full-day, um, year. The other thing was that we were concerned, um, that if we started to go down that road, that with the diversity of our community, there's no way we could accommodate all of the religious holidays, so, you know, where is that, where is that line? So that the three people on the calendar committee who celebrate the Jewish high holidays, um, said that the calendar, as we proposed it to you all last time, that would be fine. And since heard back, um, from the, um, sent, you know, responded to the parent, and she wrote back, and she said that she understands, she suggested, um, the consideration, that we, even if we don't put those days into the calendar, that we give the principals at the start of the year what those days are, so that if field trips, for instance, or nature's classroom, or something like that were to be scheduled, that they could keep those days in mind while they schedule special things like that.
Well, that's a gr- I think that's more than fair.
That's a great idea.
And really appreciate how she respectfully got involved in the conversation.
So, here we go.
Okay. So...
Keep those dates up.
I do, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, it would be Anne Marie.
Yep. So you do that for the year?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. Um, so now we've got the late starts, and I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Late starts, well, and I'm gonna actually bring, uh, Dr. Graham back up to the table to, to...
You're a busy man!
Do a follow-up tonight. So, you know that, um, previously, Dr. Graham gave a bit of a, a broad, broad overview on the late starts. This year, there were twelve, right? Is that, is that correct?
Originally twelve scheduled, it moved back to eleven.
Eleven.
Unfortunately, we missed a couple because of, of weather and stuff, but...
I had one student who, from the high school say, "Why do you always do this on our already late starts?" It's like, we do not control the weather, we do not. Um, so yes, that's true, so, so you've had fewer, fewer this year. But I think there are twelve scheduled for, uh, slated for next year, of what you're proposing...
That was my recommendation.
That's your recommendation, and it's up to the school committee, and we'll have some of that discussion, uh, this evening, as to whether we wanna stick with twelve late starts or not. And I know, Dr. Graham, you had, you had surveyed folks, and, and maybe you could just do, have a, a bit of a tee-up on that, and, and some of the findings from those surveys.
So there were two action items that I took away from the last school committee meeting. One was, I think there was a recommendation to think about going back and surveying parents. Again, I'd surveyed them last March, um, which I thought was a great suggestion, um, so I did that, um, I think shortly after the last, uh, meeting that I was at in the middle of February, and the results of that survey are included in your packet. Um, there were, uh, four primary questions that I asked. I was interested in knowing whether parents understood the purpose of having late starts, um, asked whether or not it was burdensome, the late starts, particularly in terms of transporting children to school on late start days, um, whether or not parents would be supportive or not of continuing late starts for next year, and if late starts did continue for next year, we've been doing them on Wednesdays, is Wednesday the best day, are there other days that, um, we should be looking at? And I can summarize the results if you want, but I think they're there in the packet for you. I mean, generally, um, parents indicated, um, over three-quarters indicated that they agreed or strongly agreed that they understood the purpose. About ninety percent of parents either strongly disagreed or disagreed that the late starts were burdensome. Um, a little over eighty-eight percent agreed or strongly agreed that, um, with the idea of having late starts again next year, and about three-quarters said, "If we reduce them again next year, Wednesday makes the most sense." So that was the, the results from that. Then, uh, the other action item for me, I think, a question that arose was, "To what extent are late starts having an impact on student learning and on professional practice at the high school?" So in response to that, I did something which, I, I'm very glad that that question came up, 'cause I think it was, it was a fantastic thing for me to do, under any circumstances, was I put together a mid-year report. put together a mid-year report. So we had 32 different professional learning teams, PLTs, that met during the first semester of the year. And the majority of teachers were in more than one. So what typically would happen is we would, because we have two hours there, is we would have one hour and there'd be some activities slotted in that one hour and there would be another hour and different activities would be slotted in a different hour. So most teachers were active in more than one professional learning team. So I asked them to do a mid-year report, which was an opportunity for them to reflect on what have they accomplished so far. And I asked them a number of different questions. I asked them, what's the work that you've accomplished? Are there any products that have resulted from your work in lesson plans, units, or assessments? What are you planning on doing if this PLT is continuing for the remainder of the year? What's kind of your general plan for the remainder of the year? But then the two questions that, kind of the highlighted questions were, what impact, if any, has your PLT work had on the learning or achievement of students in your classes? And asked them if they could quantify that, if they felt that there was an impact. And what impact, if any, has the work of your PLT had on your instructional practices? So each of those, each of those groups sent that back to me and then I went through them and tried to figure out some way to find patterns in the data that, what they'd given back to me, to try to bring you back something. So then you see on, I had a hand, I have a handout that summarizes that and I'll just briefly go through it. About 19% of the groups indicated that their work did not directly impact student learning. So that might have been a situation in which they were creating curriculum for the next year, but it wasn't something that was impacting student learning right now. Most of the student learning responses I got were anecdotal responses. In other words, teachers said, we believe that, but they didn't say, well, we, you know, collected data that showed that. So about half of the groups said that their work did impact student learning in positive ways through access to enhanced curriculum. That might be, some examples were students learning new topics that they might not otherwise have learned, more opportunities for collaboration, more inquiry based lessons. 22% of groups indicated anecdotally that the work had an impact on soft skills. So those might be things like improved research skills, improved self-assessment skills, improved engagement. 9% of groups, which is probably about three groups, indicated anecdotally that their work did have an impact on student learning, but they didn't provide data that supported that. So they said, you know, well, it seemed like quiz scores went up, but they didn't say, here's how much they went up. There was one group that indicated through objective data that attendance, that work that they had done in their PLT had improved student attendance rates. And then there were, I think, four groups, 13% of groups, had specific data where they said, you know, we administered this project last year and here were the grades that students got. We administered the same project this year after making adjustments as a result of PLT work and we saw an improvement in grades. Or we've seen quiz grades on this topic that we've been focusing on go up over the course of the year. Then the second big bucket was professional practice. There was one group that indicated their work had had no impact on professional practice and that was a group that was primarily sharing strategies about students for future implementation, but not for current implementation. About half of the groups indicated that their work had resulted in shared curricular instructional strategies, so they'd shared different things with each other. For example, there was one where we had a math teacher who was more experienced, working with the first year math teacher. For, one thing I want to point out is you probably noticed that the numbers don't add up to 100. There were certainly instances in which a group indicated multiple things. So they might indicate that we shared and it resulted in, you know, development or revision of curriculum. So about 41% of the groups indicated that their work had resulted in revised or new curriculum. And then 22% of groups indicated that their work had resulted in actual changes in their instructional practices in the classroom. There were a variety of examples for that, explicitly teaching reading skills and content areas, using technology in new ways. And then I included a quote, our largest PLT group is our literacy PLT and that's a group that existed last year as well. And that has teachers from a variety of different subject areas. Patty O'Connor, I don't know if she's still here or not, was involved and has been involved in that group as well. And that's looking at student literacy skills and ways in which teachers can try to address student literacy skills in their classroom. So there was, what I thought was a very powerful quote from that that I included in the packet as well.
So that quote, we have to talk about that quote because right in the middle of it in recent years, it's like, boy, do we have to push that down? It's a good thing you're doing the literacy program right now.
Well, that's for elementary, right?
Yeah, but it sounds like it needs to.
Oh, it definitely does. Like, there's a definite need. And again, right across the district, again, for consistency across the district, so.
Right. Okay. So any questions? Lynn. Lynn! Oh, wait, let me, before, because just let me, Mark, go ahead. Poor Mark!
I'm just interested in getting a sense of the overall program leadership in the sense of it surviving your departure and the wellbeing and self-propelled nature of the collaboration that's going on right now.
So I think that, and based on teacher feedback, this is something that they find to be very valuable. You know, not without some people who feel alternatively, but the large majority of the staff feels very strongly about this and sees it as very valuable. And I think that we are at a point now where this will be sustained beyond me, which is, you know, which is my hope. I see this as a capacity building measure that will outlive my tenure at the high school. Thank you.
Thanks. Lynn.
I'm piggybacking on you a little bit, but I'm more worried about the anecdotal versus the actual. Is there a way to have the teachers think about this and actually make this a data gathering process so that it can be sustained? Because if, if it stays anecdotal.
Kathy.
Kathy. Yeah. Well, I'm thinking along the same lines that, and there's the saying, when you do lesson planning or set goals, that you begin with the end in mind. So if you have an idea for a project, what is it that you hope to achieve? And how do you know you got there? And, you know, there are ways to collect anecdotal evidence and data. So this just seems a little fuzzy to me. I would rather see something more easily substantiated about improvement. Like, I was really interested in the one that talked about how indicated through objective data that their work had an impact on student learning through improvement in soft skills, citing attendance rates. I'd like to know more about that, what the baseline was, how they collected data, how many students were impacted. So if there is, the district is supporting the work of teachers, and I think it's important that we do, this is a start, but I would, I would like to see them set goals around what they hope to achieve and then have the data better substantiated. And I realize that wasn't part of the plan and that we sort of just brought it up in February, but moving forward as we, you work with the high school, I, I would like to see what the conversation is around that.
Well, we have two years of data, even if it is fuzzy. We, I mean, there's got to be a way to kind of consolidate some of that to move forward.
But after the fact, if, if you don't have a, a process at the beginning, and then does it align from year to year? And I think that, I don't want to take away from the fact that the impact on professional practice, I think, is, is huge. And the, getting people together to talk about literacy, I can't tell you how long this has been languishing up there and just trying to put all the pieces together. But in terms of demonstrating the impact this has had on improving student learning, I think there's, there's got to be additional conversation. And it's not for us to, this is my opinion.
Right, and I think. No, it's a strong opinion and I think it's been echoed previously, or that would be backwards.
Whatever.
I'm supposed to be a writer. But I'm going to turn it over to you to provide input because I think what Lynn and Kathy and others have said in the room reinforces that.
So a, so a couple of different thoughts. First of all, I think like any, any good initiative, you're always looking to tweak it, refine it, build upon it and whatnot. And I think that that's really just where you're at right now. I think, Mr. Jones, to your, to your point, it's a point well taken. I, I believe that this could and should be sustainable through the, the process. I, I do support the notion of the early start, so I want to put that out as a pre-qualifier to what I'm going to say next. But I'm concerned about the number, the number of times, you know. And I know that Dr. Graham and I have had this conversation. To me, I, and I understand the need for our teachers to be getting together and to group together and do their work, you know, in, in job like, you know, content areas. I get all that. But I do worry about just the time lost, you know. So I support maintaining them. I'm just not sure that I fully support the notion of keeping a total of 12. I would like to see that number come down a bit. That's just a personal professional opinion. I also agree, you know, with your, with your point as well. You do always, you should always start with the end in mind and back end. I mean, understanding by design, which really is what your teachers are doing anyway, you know. So I think it's just a different lens that you're looking at it from. So, but I think your staff is already doing that. So I support the early starts. I just don't think I support 12.
So for the calendar, what does that, what does that translate to?
Well, I think that's a, that's a discussion you're, you're welcome to have here, but I, I think you can.
Well, I don't think we should make that decision.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I think that we need to have that discussion in terms of, I don't know what feedback you're getting either, but, you know, I've said to Dr. Graham, you know, the notion of, do we look at eight rather than 12, for example? And I don't know what that looks like from your lens, Dr. Graham, from your perspective, or is that really going to eke away at what you've already got pre-established? And if it is, then I'd like to know that too.
Yeah.
So I'm, I believe more collaboration is always better than less collaborative time. I think that there's a number where you probably get to a point where it's too few to have much impact. For example, if you did something like this once a quarter, there's so much time in between that there's not much opportunity to sustain. You know, one thing that, that, you know, might be interesting is to front load a little bit more in the calendar. I tried to do that somewhat in the proposed calendar because once you start to get to post-April vacation in May, things become very hectic and so it becomes more challenging. I mean, in essence, we've ended up, we'll end up this year with probably eight or nine actual practical times when teachers have met because, we lost one because of MCAS and then we've lost a couple because of weather related stuff. The, the feedback from teachers, the majority of teachers were in favor of keeping or, or expanding the number that we have. Having been said, you know, there are always, you know, there, there are always trade-offs when you use time for one thing, you're taking time away from something else. So 12 is the number that feels good to me, but if that's, you know, if less than that is, makes sense for the school committee, I wouldn't want, I would recommend not to go too far below that because again, I think that you start having too much time in between and you're not able to maintain that. It may be, you know, if there are fewer, I might want to look at the dates that are in the proposed calendar and with, you know, with the opportunity from, with the, you will maybe look to front load more rather than.
I just want to jump in and, and I don't want to make you crazy here. And I can do that. But we've, we've done this before. I don't think that it's appropriate for the school committee to dictate the amount of time that the teachers really should have educating the students. I think we look to the experts in the schools and in the administration to understand what that looks like. The genesis of the question was truly around, how do we know that we're, we're returning the investment of time to driving student achievement? And how does that relate back to the school's improvement plan and the district's improvement plan? And we're in a funky kind of rebuild phase with improvement plans because we, we've got to sit with our new superintendent, who pretty soon we're not going to be able to say new, so you're going to have to get used to that, and build those structures, which gets to what Kathy said, what Mark said, what Lynn said, Jennifer, everyone has said. And then that will be the direct link back. So I just want to make it clear that I don't think it's appropriate for the school committee to be defining the number of late starts. We are going to look to you folks and expect that the recommendation that you will be making takes into consideration the time out of the classroom and the value.
The ROI.
Yep. The ROI.
No, and I absolutely get that. And I think that Dr. Graham and I consent, Deon, and I really support the notion of front loading. I really do. I think that that's exactly what we should do. And less at the back end, you know, and, and watch those months where we already have so many breaks, like, you know, like the February break or the April. I mean, I just think we need to, this year was kind of a, in spite of the fact that we still had fewer, I, I still took in complaints, do you know what I mean? So I think we still need to look at this. So I would suggest that Dr. Graham and I go back now and just revamp what this looks like and we'll bring it forward and say, here's our suggestion.
And when does the calendar have to be approved?
You've already approved the calendar, it's just the late starts.
It's the late starts. Okay. All right.
No, no one has.
No, we didn't. We said, no, what we said was, as long as no one has any other issues with the rest of the calendar, we would withhold the vote until this was resolved.
Oh, okay. Someone missed that, I thought that.
I don't.
One time question.
Yeah.
On the survey of parents, was there some shift of recognition of the value of this than compared to last year? I vaguely, perhaps incorrectly recall, there's some more complaint on the survey data.
The numbers were relatively similar to last year. I mean, it was, I think, you know, somewhere in the 80 to high 80% of parents last year who said they were in favor of continuing it. The, and I don't think the numbers were off by more than five percentage points or so. So, yeah, it was, it was pretty comparable. I don't believe I'd asked the question last year about Wednesday, so that was a new question, so I can't compare that back. But the other ones, you know, the numbers were pretty comparable within five percentage points or so. And I don't think it was, you know, noticeably up or down.
Yep. Thank you.
Neil.
So, thank you for this. Now, I'm just in re-reviewing the questions to the teachers. I'm noticing this isn't like a breakdown of like 100% of the staff or whatnot because the numbers are over 100%. So that being said, right, so that being said, I, I would love to understand, do all the teachers perceive a value in this late start? And those who don't, like, what, what could be done differently, you know, so that they would receive some value in that? Whether it's like, you know, the people that are with the Chromebook Initiative, instead of it being interdepartmental, perhaps the teachers with the Chromebooks get to, and whatever, you guys worked that out, but you know what I mean? Are there other avenues that perhaps they could be pursuing to, to gain that value that perhaps they're not seeing?
The, the teacher survey data, which I think I brought last time, had some information around that. So I believe I asked teachers the question, do you find late starts to be productive? Are you generally in favor of them? And there were some other questions around it. So some of that might have been answered in there. And then there's also comments, and I didn't bring like the individual comments, those are things that I reviewed. And so there is more detailed information in those comments. But yes. And, I mean, back to your point, Mark, I think that we do have the capacity for this to continue. At the same time, I think that this is initiative that does need to, Kathy, to your point, to, you know, continue to be tight.
Involve.
You know, this is, this is, we're only not even two years into teachers having the opportunity to sit down on a regular basis and collaborate with the college, which is wonderful. It's also very challenging. Sometimes that means being willing to change your practice and that's not always the easiest thing to do. And, you know, the research shows that that's, the effectiveness of this as an overall student learning improvement initiative depends in large part on the extent to which teachers are able to build a sense of community and a sense of trust with each other. And also the extent to which it gets, you know, focused and the parameters around, we really need to make sure this has a payoff and ROI in terms of student learning. So I think that's the next step.
Right.
For this initiative. I think that everything is beside.
That is excellent information. Thank you for that. So Anne Marie, my question for you is, do we have a timeframe by which we need to have this approved?
The only date that's in the policy is the date by which we need to present it to the school committee for their consideration. I don't think there's any other date. What happens though, if it's not voted, is that people who are looking to make their vacation plans for their family for next year.
Right.
Will start to make calls.
So if you're not prepared to make a recommendation tonight, then I would say one more meeting for just the recommendation so we can get this thing approved and move on.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just take one comment about it? Remember the guy who complained that he didn't understand what PD was and is there a key? Remember we had somebody that, in the beginning of the year, who didn't realize, his kid came home in the middle of the day and he didn't realize that.
It was an email. It wasn't even.
Was it an email?
Yeah, it was correspondence.
Right. And then he didn't realize what the keys were? So there was no key that says, you know, what is PD? What is PTC? What is, so that, he wanted something that would say, PTC is there?
That's lost for you.
Yes, he.
I just speak.
So his, his child showed up in the middle of the day and he didn't know why their child.
Whoops. Actually, that's a good point. If you have the room, yeah, that would be great.
Just to address that issue, so.
My child showed up in the middle of the day.
Something, something, yeah.
All right.
Or like, maybe he didn't have time to prepare.
Let's wrap this one up.
Is it possible to just vote on the calendar itself with the addition? I mean, we know that it's going to be Wednesdays with.
I think we should wait till we have the whole thing done and then get it, get it done. Because now it's lagging. We voted on a piece, but then we got to actually vote to adopt the other pieces.
Right, right. No, I'm just.
No, that's a fair question.
I know people are starting to book right now.
Yeah, the truth is though, that your date, the actual dates are not going to change. The only thing that's going to change on here, because that calendar committee has, has met, they've mapped this out, the only piece left is how many of these days and where these other days are going to fall. So in all fairness, I think that's, you know, we, we could probably, if, if somebody said, can I see what the draft looks like? You could submit that draft to the parents so they could take a look at it, if, if that happens the next week.
I have received a lot of phone calls. I have been telling people that the draft, they've been asking what the first day of school is. And I've been telling everybody, the draft shows that that is the first day of school. And I told them what the day was and said that that date is not in question.
And when does, when do the chunks of vacation, the chunk weeks of vacation, February?
Right. And I said, those dates are not in question, it's the late starts that are in question. So everybody's been happy with that response.
All right. So we can all agree, thank you for doing the additional research and thank you for championing the cause.
Actually, Harry, when you called, when you interviewed the teachers, you called them groups, not, so did, did not all the teachers participate?
So the teachers sign up for, last spring, the teachers put proposals in to be a part of groups. These are supposed to be collaborative groups. They're not meeting individually, they're meeting with. And so they submitted proposals to me about what they wanted their collaborative groups to be. I signed off on it. And so 32 of those different groups met. And some of the groups had, you know, 15 members, some had two or three members.
So are one hundred percent of the teachers involved?
Correct. Every teacher has to be involved in at least one of these. They have to have their time scheduled for that full two hours.
Okay.
And it looks different, you know, what it looks like for the sole band teacher is going to be different than what it looks like for the math teacher who's got to be filed with you.
Do we want to do most of this?
All right, we're moving on. We're moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, okay, so the next item is the FY eighteen budget discussion and vote. I'm going to turn this over to you, and maybe you in tandem with FinCom.
Absolutely. So I'll just go through a couple of salient points. We decided tonight that we probably didn't need a PowerPoint presentation or anything like that, because the truth is, these numbers have not changed dramatically at all from where we, actually, almost from where we started, bits and pieces along the way, but every time that happened, we brought it forward to you.
Excuse me one second. Can we get it in the packet? Whatever the document is that you're going to speak from, can we get that in the packet?
The, the final, the final draft, yeah. Pat, do, are we able to even just put it up in case people want to take a look at it?
Do you have your email spreadsheets in your.
No, 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 I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about anybody who wants.
This is being passed around from a Bolton resident for your.
Oh, how lovely.
Nice. They do have pecans.
Home made.
Pecans.
Pecans.
Thank you, thank you Bolton resident.
I so appreciate of homemade anything.
So going back to what's in the packet.
Is this wrong?
Can we just get this done?
Is this a friendly Bolton resident?
Okay, we're going to get back on track, Mark, a lovely Bolton resident.
So if you can get it up on, just put it up on, between Pat and Alita, if you can put it up, that'd be great.
Oh, I can.
So a couple of salient points to remember is that until our negotiations are wrapped up, this kind of sits where it sits now, until that happens, and then there'll be a realignment or a shift once we know where those contracts land. And just to keep in mind, I would say we're probably about halfway through maybe the negotiations with, with Unit A contract, Unit C contract comes right behind those, that set of negotiations. So, and basically, it's just about probably ninety percent of our staff that's involved. So it's a huge number that we're looking at that could sway either way in terms of finalizing our numbers here and shifting them to do a realignment. So I want to put that out there. The bus contract, we've had the opening of the bids, and Pat, I believe is going to bring that next meeting, I think, Pat, I think we'll put it on the agenda for the next bus contract. Because it just opened, and we just opened the bids on that, it was a little bit higher than we had anticipated, that was, that was a little discouraging, but it is what it's going to transport our students and get them here. So that was something else that we'd put on deck right at the beginning, that that was something else that we were watching, and I think you'll remember that, I put that up on several PowerPoint presentations, that these were the three key drivers for us. There had been a question at some point in time about OPEB, and I just want to make sure that, you know, if you're looking at the executive summary, you'll find that OPEB is there for fifty thousand dollars, which is what we said we were going to do right under the system-wide component, under the executive, in the executive summary. So that's there as well. Other than that, there are really no key shifts from any of our other discussions. The positions that we said that we're going to be in there are still in there. We know that there will be the potential for reductions, we're also showing that right now, but again, it all really depends on these contracts being negotiated and finalized. So that's kind of a bit of a tee-up, and then if I can turn it over to the three finance subcommittee members from their perspective, and maybe if you can each add a little piece here, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, I mean, we did kind of review everything today for, went over final questions and so forth, and I think, I think we're all pretty much in agreement that, that we're okay with moving forward on this, and I'll let Jennifer and Mark comment if they have anything else.
So your recommenda, oh, you're, are you giving?
Recommendation, recommendation would be to accept the budget.
To adopt the budget as it is.
Four point two one percent?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add, Jennifer, Mark?
I, I had no additional amendments to make to the budget, and I'm content to recommend as a member of the committee that we vote on it as it's been most recently presented, and it's not, hasn't been changed since we'd seen it last. So I'm content to recommend as well what we vote on it as it is.
Including the fee increases on the pre-K extended day.
So one of the things we did do today was because we had a conversation with administration and so forth about the idea of having the whole, especially pre-K, explained maybe a little, a little better as far as clearer, a better narrative to go along with. So there was a worksheet that was redone that does break things down, I think, more succinctly, more understandable. It's no less painful for any parents that are involved, but it, it explains where the process is, and I think more clearly what the real costs are for things, and answers some of the questions that some of the people had had and expressed, and assuming that that's going to be put up on, put up on the web.
The web, yeah. So I, can I just spring a, a chair.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Thank you. So one of the things that, that we have to keep in mind, and Chairman Ross did a nice job this earlier tonight, and talking about, you know, even citizen comments type thing, that we've got certain rules and certain protocols that we have to buy-bye. When we create new sheets that are intended really for the school committee, they have to see them first before we disseminate them. And I think that sometimes there's a need or a desire for some things to come forward, and it's not been the practice that we ship things out to parents before they come to school committee. So we needed tonight to be able to have this, to distribute, to say, okay, here is, here is the sheet. Now, the finance subcommittee worked with Pat today to refine this and really make sure it's, you know, was on more, I guess, for clarification purposes, just a little bit more clear, a little bit more understandable type thing. And, you know, we had said sometimes we work so much with these numbers that although we understand it, and we think everybody else understands it, and sometimes it doesn't work that way. I also want to point out too, and I'm not even sure if the school committee realizes this, but our finance subcommittee has been working so diligently on this process, this budget cycle. I want to say probably January, we started every week meetings, and sometimes they've been twice a week meetings. And they're not just an hour or two, they're generally the entire morning. And so I, I think that, I say this unabashedly to the school committee at large, your finance subcommittee dug and dug and dug and asked so many questions, how does go back and revamp things, or relook at things, or whatnot? So I, I think from our lens as administration, we saw our finance subcommittee this year as a, as a strong partner in our process, working this through and helping to guide us through it. So special thanks to our finance subcommittee for the work that you've done.
Can I, and I'd like to interject, right, so, sort of right back at you, what's, what's been very enjoyable, I think, having been on this for a couple of years now, is that the partnership that we've had, and I think Don Lowe explained this quite well eloquently, and I can't really do it much better, but it, there's, there's this honesty and this level of, I think, partnership that we've had, where we can actually ask questions and, and you provide us with the answers, and, and we really appreciate that, and I think that that's, that's helped with a lot of the transparency. It's created a lot of changes in the way things have been done, some of them aren't comfortable, some of them aren't pleasant, but it's, things are getting much more in order where they weren't before. And, and so for that, I think I speak to the entire FinCom, and I say, we really appreciate what both you and Pat have been doing this entire year.
Thank you.
So with the handout of this, Jennifer.
Just want to make one statement about the pre-K issue, and not that we aren't aware that this increase can be onerous to some families, but there are assistance programs, and this, they're fairly generous, I mean, I think, people, I don't think that many, as many people take advantage of the reduced possibilities to these fees as could. So I think people need to start thinking about whether they, if it's really going to be a problem, that they start that process.
So I need to understand, I'm not going to try to digest this, why don't you tell me what, where the rates are changing?
On the back side, bottom, I just want to do that bit.
So green is what it actually costs us.
Mm-hmm. White is what we're currently charging.
So we've got actual costs, what, what that actually costs the, the district right now as far as for, for the program itself, then the current fee structure that, that we have this year, and then the voter and accepted upon increase, which is proposed, proposed one fee structure.
So five-day full is, five full days is, costs us two thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars a month? Is that correct?
That's the.
We're relooking, well, that's a half-day, three-day.
No.
That's only, that's what the one eighty-one is.
No, monthly fee.
No, it should be, it should actually be weekly on there, I believe.
No, 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 that's.
Well, it's twenty-three, yeah. Yeah, per month, yeah, sorry, per month, two, two, yeah.
First student.
Twenty-three.
Oh, so we're looking at a monthly rate.
So you might want to look at the hourly rate. What might be easy is when you look at the, and Pat jumped in, Phil, if I miss something, what you really want to look at is actual cost hourly. If you take a look at the bottom of the green box, there it is, if you take a look at the bottom of the white box, there's the current, if you take a look at the, at the orange box envelope, there's the proposed.
Okay.
And that to me was the easiest way to kind of look at it.
I know there's been questions, you know, a question or two about, you know, hey, facilities was never figured out in the past going in there, but this is something specifically through the forensic report that was brought forward and said, we really need to start looking at it this way to understand what the true costs of these programs are, because many of these programs, pre-K, kindergarten being less so, but being part of it, where they're, they're subsidized by the parent, and or you could look at it, they're subsidized by the district. That's, that's one of the key things that I need, I think, need to be.
So, so I'm going to ask some questions, because I'm not in the finance subcommittee meetings. The, the pre-K, and we've all identified this, that program is there to help students, younger students who are on IEPs, prepare for school. And I know there's been some question about the expense and how that expense is allocated. So I just need some assurance that the numbers that we're being presented with are truly for just the coverage for the non-IEP students.
Well, and you and I have had this discussion before, keep in mind that you've got a special education teacher that's, that's teaching this group, as opposed to a regular generalist or what have you, so.
Is there a cost differential in that?
No.
Okay, so that's important.
And so I want to make sure that that's out there. There is.
It's mandatory too. It's, it's, it's not something that we do, it's mandatory.
So that's not a cost you can break out that makes any sense to break out, do you know what I mean? So, so we, we've taken a look at all of that. The other thing I was thinking too, and I was appreciative, because I've had two parents now send me something, I know Laura, you sent me a letter that I'd never seen before, and I know Nicole had sent me a letter that I'd never seen before either, and that was very helpful, by the way. And, you know, when you take a look, I was, I was thinking back to the one that I think Laura, you had sent, and it had like a six percent I think increase at one point in time, and I thought, you know, if you, if you really thought this through, and that, I want to say that was two thousand thirteen, and I thought, if we, if they had done, what was interesting about that is that I believe that the superintendent at the time had alluded to the fact that I think it, I want to say it was twenty-two point seven percent increase within the Neshova component. Yeah, no, that's a good, thank you. And, but that, that to me says, okay, even at that point in time, it was out of kilter, because it, it didn't match, and so you had a differential already then, so there's that way of looking at it. The other thing is that you can also take a look and say, okay, since two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, if you'd done that six percent, and it did that six percent every year, you'd kind of be where we are, do you know what I mean? And not taking into account some of the other things like the facility cost, the other thing is that since that point in time, you were receiving for pre-K and K substantially more state money than you're receiving right now. Those are all mitigating factors in this whole piece. So I think we really have to look broader than just what is this cost rate at this second.
I know that this is painful for a lot of parents that are in this situation, and it's quite frankly, and I use a different word, but it's a cruddy situation for them to be in, but it's, it's, it's not just the parents, it's the program itself, it's the district, it's all the other parents that are in the district, and the money that's going by taxpayers, what's being used for the schools. As these increases haven't been done over the years, we've been paying more and more of a subsidy for the programs, and that's been actually, people won't agree, but it's been taking away from the money that's available for other programs and things out there. So it is a hard hit, but we do need to reset, and, I mean, that's the best I can do.
So one of my questions is, the kindergarten fee structure, is that set? Because I don't think we voted that.
Yes.
Yeah, you did.
Did you vote on it?
We voted fifteen percent.
Oh.
Fifteen dollars.
It's all, it's all set?
It's a hundred fifty dollar a year differential from.
Yes.
So we had proposed three hundred, that, that failed.
Right.
We proposed half that, hundred fifty on an annual basis increase.
Fifty dollars a month.
And I'm just going to throw one thing out there, and this is just my own, but I think we all need to think about. So we're going into this conversation, we've talked about already, about the idea of potential free K next year, the conversation.
Or some outlier.
Or some, or some outlier. And if that doesn't work out, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that these parents who have kids in pre-K just got hit with a big amount, and we need to be cognizant that we don't want, if things change and it doesn't go free pre-K, that they don't get hit, you know what I mean, with this, that, like, they're not daring, they're not getting the brunt of all the hits as they, their kids progress.
The first.
If that, right, exactly.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? So I think we need to be cognizant of that.
But I think this, this problem's come up, I know that policy's going to be writing a new policy, that these have to be revisited every single year.
Right.
And they have to be reevaluated every year, so it sounds like they're all going to go up every year incrementally.
Oh, I don't think that's necessarily the case, I don't think that that's.
I think we have to look at the programs too, and like I said before, what are we offering?
I, I think it was really just a case, yes, you're right, and I think it was really just more about a case of that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we haven't done anything or any look at a program for four or five years, and then have to come forward with something, the very thing that we're doing right now. That doesn't mean that it has to go up though every year, it just means it should come before you every year to have a look at, and, and that, actually, that's exactly where, what you're suggesting, Mr. Darcy, fits perfectly. We want to be cautious of those kids, those parents who have students right now in pre-K going into pre-K next year, that there's not a double whammy the year after. So that's, that's a perfect example of why you'd put that in place. But it does not, from my lens, does not mean it goes up every year.
Mark.
I'd like to partially directly answer your question of proportionality between specialized students and regular students.
Yeah.
So it's about, on the, on this side of the page, on, there's, they said it's students that are regular education, it's about five lines down from the top in that orange block.
Yeah.
Says sixty-four point five percent. And then at the bottom of the blue block, nearly beneath it.
Yeah.
Seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's more or less the cost of the regular ed kids. And if you flip your page over and look at the bottom right corner of the orange block, after the rate change, of that cost of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, the fee structure supports four hundred eighty-seven. So the district is still putting, putting in to the program in the vicinity of three hundred thousand dollars to support the regular education students for the pre-kindergarten program, and the fees are supporting four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that seven hundred eighty thousand dollars.
And this is the pre-K program?
Correct.
Right. So that.
Hold on, it needs, something else needs to be really clarified here that I just noticed. So on that front page, Mark, were you just talking about where it says the seven eighty-eight, six seventy-eight, and it says off-cost for regular ed? I think it's really important that people understand that, that the cost for a full-time pre-K child is not seventy-two hundred thirty-five dollars, which, that was, that, we had talked about that today, and that was going to be changed to the average. It's the average cost, so it's an extrapolation of all of the part-time kids and the full-time kids together combined, and that's where the average of seventy-two thirty-five.
So, but what were the, what were the two, three, four-day rates based on? They weren't based on the average seventy-two thirty-five, right?
Right. So it's.
I mean, because, because I would want to, I mean, I just, I just need to know if the two-day rate is truly the, well, you've got it down to the hourly rate, so that's the answer.
And you see the hourly rates are substantially comparable among each of the categories of kids.
Okay, so, so for pre-K, and then, you know, we can kind of close this out unless someone has a, I said, pre-K and extended day, I think, you know, you know, there's two sides of an equation, right? There's, there's, there's the expense side, and then, then there's the, the revenue side. And I, I'm more concerned about the expense side, and what is in the program, and do, have we built a Cadillac? And we may not need a Cadillac. I don't know that, I'm just, you know, over the next year, as you look at the program, do we need everything that's in that? do we need everything that's in that? I don't know the answer, I'm not the educator.
Well, to be honest with you, even before this came, came to be where it's at right now, certainly Joan DeAngelis and I were, and Pat, were having discussions on. I don't think that we looked at it through the lens of the Cadillac, but we did look at it through a number of different lenses and said, we need to revisit this right now. I think somebody, I think maybe it was Laura, I think had asked the question, is this running efficiently? And I, I don't believe it is running efficiently. But we can only do so much in the amount of time, and so I would agree with your thinking that I think we need to go back and revisit this period, the whole thing this year, pre-K, well, we wanna do that with K too, but.
Okay, so that would be the expectation. All right, any other questions, any other concerns? Any other comments on the budget itself? Because we have, by, by our regional agreement, have to vote this budget tonight or not, so.
When you say or not, what do you mean?
That would be a problem.
We gotta make the vote.
Oh.
But, but if you have concerns or questions.
Well, I just, I, after attending the finance committee meeting in Lancaster, I'm just, I don't know what the difference is in a regular year versus a negotiation year, if the timeframe ever shifts for budget approval, it doesn't happen.
No, not at all. And that, that's always problematic, you know, I'm talking to the, the union president the other day about the same thing, and he said, yeah, every year there's a, a budget year where we're negotiating, this is exactly what happens, so. Because there's, you have nothing that you can count on.
Correct.
And, and ninety percent of your staff is, is on a contract, you know, and if there's, there's nothing you can count on except what you already have in there, and we've already, we've already taken that into account.
So, where are we at?
We did have a discussion in the finance subcommittee on the possibility that there is surplus and how to handle that. Much more knowledge will come out April, May timeframe when, because there are a bunch of stuff that we still don't even know how much it's gonna cost yet, even for this budget cycle. So, if there's surpluses in this year's budget, how that will be handled, whether there's a discussion about reducing assessments. But that's gonna be something that's gonna have to come out once this year's budget is final, at least most of the numbers are final, and both of those contracts are settled.
So it's a bigger, part of a bigger discussion, if there were surpluses, you know, it, it, it's gonna be on some of the, the unknowns. But to be very clear, we don't have a ton of surpluses that are sitting there that, that we don't know about.
Pretty much scraped out what we had.
Things that are here.
But I'm thinking about things like Medicare money, that we don't have any idea.
Right, well, we don't know.
So we don't know when the final numbers come in, transportation and things like that, so, so.
Our transportation reimbursement, these things that you don't, you just don't know.
From the state, the state gives us.
But I'm saying, there will be a discussion, and there needs to be a discussion on how those things are handled and what those monies, happen to those monies.
Right, and part of our discussion is, is to piggyback off that. You know, the idea of going to the towns and saying, you know, stabilization funds, do we, do we create a stabilization fund? And then wean ourselves off of B and D, how's that work? Get Dr. Hemmings back in here, have that conversation, bring the towns, whether it's, we floated the idea of bringing the town Fincoms. Maybe even do like a tri-town with Fincoms workshop for OPEB in, in getting an understanding, what the expectations, what the buy-ins. So we've got some big conversations that we still have to flush out with regard to, to those things. And I think we're gonna get towards the end of the year, we're gonna get at least the framework of those things set.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So we're back to, does somebody wanna make a motion to adopt the FY?
I'd move to adopt the FY eighteen budget as presented.
Second, Kathy?
You.
You have a question?
No.
Comment, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I second it.
Oh, I couldn't hear with a finger in your mouth.
No, it's the crunchy, crunchy pecans.
They're delicious. I don't know.
Thank you, Brian Boyle.
So is that, is that a vote?
All right, anybody have, we need a two-thirds vote on this. Anybody have any other questions? I'm gonna let it go, one, two. All those in favor?
I have my hand up already.
Neil, Lynn, Mark, Kathy, and myself, all those opposed? Susan and Jennifer are Lancaster reps.
And I just wanna say, I in no way think that this is a bad budget, I don't think it's in any way a, a statement on the amount of effort gone into it. We just can't afford it.
The town of Lancaster.
Yeah.
Second of us are two-thirds? Yes.
Yes, it does.
Is it two-thirds of the total, or two-thirds?
Two-thirds of all seats.
We have it.
Yeah, you got five.
We have it.
Two-thirds of eight.
We have it.
Yes.
The budget's passed.
Hey, could I just, it's not clear from the audience what the final one was.
It was.
Five to two.
Five to two.
To Lancaster, resident.
Nicole's not here today.
That's sixty percent.
So two-thirds is.
A third is sixty-seven percent.
Did we find ourselves the same place we were? Does that mean we do not have?
You and I have two-thirds voting in favor.
All right, we gotta talk about this.
Do the Lancaster reps have some proposals?
No, I've thought about this. So, I can't make any proposals for cuts, 'cause I don't think I'm qualified to make cutting proposals.
And the reason you both are not comfortable is, I think you need to, and I, and I don't wanna pick on you, because anyone could jump in, but help us understand.
I, I, I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable just because, and I understand the process, but the final number's not the final number, and I, I mean, there, it was just so grim with these numbers, that the thought of it getting worse is just.
Just so I understand, the final number not being, the final number is the number that's there.
That's what we vote.
That's what you vote on, there's no other number.
They can't change.
You can't change that number, Susan, we can bring it down.
Okay, but it can't go up.
It can't go up.
Right.
That's what they were talking about when they said they don't know where the revenue's gonna come in, because the state hasn't. But we can't, we can't increase the assessments to the town, what's, whatever is voted is voted, that is what it is, unless.
So would that, would that mean that there, but then that would mean you'd have to make adjustments in the way of cuts.
Within the budget, depending on, yeah, which is normal. It's, that's a, what we're going through with the contracts is very normal. It happens every three years, generally with all school districts.
I understand, but what's not normal is the situation that Lancaster's in.
Oh, I, that's a totally different, yeah, totally different situation.
The only thing I could come up with was increasing the E and D amount, but I know people aren't gonna be comfortable with this yet.
What do you mean?
Well, there's one point eight in E and D, if you instead take a million, take a million two.
And that would leave us with what, Pat? Five hundred thousand?
Eighty thousand?
Wait a minute, say it again.
Five hundred thousand, five eighty.
Yeah, about six.
Five eighty, so, I'm just gonna, oh, gosh, I mean, let's, you know, I get where you're both at, but five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in excess and deficiency on a fifty-five million dollar budget scares the heck out of me. Because that means we've got.
It, it puts us into, for next, I mean, fine this year, but next year, it puts us in a worse situation.
Right.
Because we drew down on the E and D, and if we're trying to get off, that's never gonna happen, A. And, and B, unfortunately, this doesn't appear to be a situation that's going to solve itself this year. And if it was, you know, you, it might make sense, okay, take a hit, get through this pump in the road. But it, for all appearances, it's something that is gonna be a while, and like next year, if we have the same conversation, it's, we're a victory.
That's where my big concern is. This year is best, next year's not gonna get any better for us.
Right.
This is a bare bones budget.
Right.
Next year, is there gonna be an increase? You know, I mean, so it's just gonna get worse for us, and we just, we're going down a hole that, you know, we're not gonna have a police department coming up. You know, I.
I, I respect what Lancaster's going through, and it's awful, I, I totally do, but you know, I and I try to put myself in a, in a home in Lancaster when I say these words. I think that the effort and the outcome of this year's budget, which is much lower, at least than I expected it to be, I think there was some difficult decisions made, and to get it even, I don't know how we would get it even lower without directly impacting programs. I don't know how, I don't know how we would do this. You guys have been meeting.
But then next year, we're in the same situation, having to bring those programs even further down.
Exactly. No, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to look at it from, you know, a Lancaster residence perspective, and, and.
But see, our option is programs, fire, police, you know.
I understand that, but we're talking about the school district's budget for three towns worth of residents and students. And I'm not in, not being insensitive to the needs of the Lancaster town. But we're here until we reach a decision.
No, I know, and I, I am not.
I'm, can I put you on the spot?
Yeah.
'Cause you're, no, actually don't.
Oh.
'Cause you're the only town manager here, and I don't understand.
What is it?
Do you have any suggestions?
What, what?
Would you?
Lynn. For real? No, you guys, we have to make this decision.
He's got a hard time.
No, we have to make this decision, let's, let's be big girls and boys, step it up, have the discussion.
I would be comfortable changing my vote if I can get a commitment, 'cause I will not be on this school committee come the end of this budget.
Right.
I can get a, and it's not a voted commitment, I just want a verbal commitment, that there, it will be a serious revisit of the surplus and how it is spent and what is done at the end of this year. I don't know what it's gonna be, it could be minuscule, and it could be a totally irrelevant conversation. But I don't want just it all getting shoved into E and D.
I think those days are gone, don't you?
I don't know, it has never happened yet, we haven't done it yet, so.
But you didn't do this either. You, this process this year, the school committee hasn't done, in my recollection, and Lynn's been here longer than I have.
But I, this is my one year.
Your one year, and we appreciate you being here.
So, I just, I would like to know that there will be a serious discussion come end of May, when you have a serious idea of what's going on, with the understanding that you can't wipe it out.
That if there is surplus, we would return it to the towns.
No, no, not that there would, no, there would be a discussion, a very serious discussion, that has never happened before, that there's ever been a reduction in the assessment because of this excess surplus. So, I just, and that's always been a complaint of Lancaster as well, is that there have been these surpluses that just kinda get folded back into the budget. If you guys can commit to that.
I think that's a very fair and reasonable request, I really do. And, and I think that the climate around the table, you know, even with Fincom, I think is such that I think very rich discussion could happen with that. I think that's a very fair and reasonable request. I, I would support that request.
I would back that up by saying in Fincom today, I mean, that was exactly what we talked about.
But I'm just, I'm not gonna be here, so I wanna, I wanna put it in an open meeting with cameras.
Personally, I, I think there's a, there's a big conversation to have just with many different aspects, you know what I mean? And, and I think that, that conversation has to be had. I think just the situation that we're talking about right now, there has to be a conversation that the other two towns are involved in, you know what I mean?
Right.
I, so I think there is a big conversation that needs to happen.
All right, so that being said, I am willing to vote with the majority.
So I just have a, sorry.
No, don't be sorry, please.
I've got a just question, so what might our mechanics be if we, suppose we have more than anticipated surplus to fifteen? And maybe we're trying, we're trying to lower the town, member towns' assessments, what are the mechanics of using one year's fiscal surplus into the next? How, how might we actually undertake, undertake that discussion in a way that has a consequence?
You mean actually physically, how do you do it?
Yeah.
I think by statute, you can vote to use the monies in certain areas, because you're not changing the budget. You know, the budget, you're only reducing the budget assessment. So you could use the surplus to, for, you know, this line item, which would then reduce the assessment to the towns, 'cause that money was already used.
Right, so we would have some, we, we would reduce the surplus in, into the following, by transferring something into the following year's space.
Turn it into, yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm not saying, I don't know what the end of the budget cycle is gonna show you.
No, and we can't, and I respect what you're saying, I respect what you're asking, I think, I think almost everyone in this room feels like if, we, we know there's more work, I mean, there's been a lot of good work, and y'all deserve a vacation, but we can't afford to pay it for you. But I think there's a lot of good work that's been done, and there's more that we have to do. And, you know, it's the trade-off of when we find there may be surplus, are we gonna add programs? Are we going to reduce the assessments? Or are we gonna do a little bit of both? And I think what you're asking is to be respectful of not maintaining the level of the assessment and considering reducing, and, and I think that makes sense, Kath. I'm sorry, you just gotta wave at me.
No, I'm trying.
'Cause these guys talk too much.
I don't watch, Joan, so shut up. No, sorry, I'll be fine. Um, you know, a couple of things that, that I'm thinking about, I mean, a few meetings ago, we talked about what would be a normal amount of E and D. If you look at past budgets, magically, E and D came out at about five percent of the budget, which is the cap, right?
Right.
No, on the money, do the math.
I did, that's why it came down.
Moving on, so that would be good to know, is it one percent, two percent, so at least we have an idea of that. The other thing I'm thinking about is that the work that has been done, I mean, in every area, but really putting a lot of scrutiny, I know the finance committee has, but the committee as a whole, have really looked and scrutinized everything. And we, the superintendent has begun to implement the recommendations from both Masbo and the forensic audit. And that work isn't done yet. And, and my, my hope, and I think the rationale behind doing those things is to find the places where perhaps we can economize or create more revenue, I'm thinking of building rentals, and there might be some other things. We haven't even begun to unpack those, the things with all the money in it.
Revolving accounts?
That's it, yep. So there's still a lot of work to do, and I think Neil was speaking about really getting, having people from the Fincom of, of, from each of the towns, be a part of our conversations and, and sort of understanding that piece of it. I'd like to see that happen. And the other thing that, as the, the only dissenting member from Lancaster, I wanna say is that this is a level services budget, there's nothing fancy in it. There are a couple of new programs, but they are designed to save us money, I'm thinking about the special education ones. And, you know, I'm comfortable with all the work that we've done, there's, there's more work to be done. If there's any surplus that we're not aware of in this budget, when we become aware of it, I trust that we're gonna do the responsible thing. And so that's why I'm in favor of this budget.
Just a couple, so as far as surpluses go, I'm pretty confident, based on the work that we've done, you're not gonna see anything like you've seen in the past. And, and in a way, I say sadly, because the reality is that the money's not gonna be there in, in spades. And I think that, you know, this conversation needs to move forward to a completely different level, because we need to understand the challenges that are coming up, and we're talking about high school.
High school.
And the needs, and we're talking about major expenses there, you know, that just to repair, not, not replace, repair. And I think we need to have this conversation, and that may mean bringing Fincoms in from all the towns and everything else and have this conversation, because this is a, this is a district, is, you know, if one town's in trouble, the district's in trouble. And that respects financially moving forward, I think we all need to come together in some sort of consensus. Last thing we wanna do, in my opinion, is do things that hurt the district and the school system, because then we feed this downward spiral. The place becomes a place you don't wanna come here for school, you don't wanna move here, the home values go down, the assessments go down, and it just keeps moving, it, it doesn't, it doesn't get any better.
So I have a question for Pat.
Yeah.
On the revenue side, for the anticipated revenue from the state, do we have any basis to know what the transportation amount will be next year compared to this year's budget?
No.
The state, is there a bill, or is it in the budget right now?
I don't even have a concrete number for this year yet.
Right, and likewise.
I'm waiting for that, that should be any day now.
And in House Budget One? And in House Budget One, is there a number that you're aware of that, on the transportation side of things, that's any different than the previous legislative?
As far as I know, it was level funded.
Yep. And similarly, on the Chapter Seventy Funds, the numbers that we have are...
They're preliminary.
Best on solid understanding on House One's unvoted on budget, right? So there's no particular reason to expect any change on the, from the state on the revenue.
I'd be cautious with that, to be honest with you, because I've seen those numbers in years go, yeah. Go up and down, and so just depending on...
Yeah, we're in a funky spot right now.
So I'd be cautious with that. I mean, I think that we're running with the numbers that we've got, and that's the best that we can do right now.
Right, and they're preliminary.
They are preliminary. I mean, you've got a lot of process still for that to go. Okay, so...
And we're seeing things get cut. Kindergarten, we lost a $60,000 grant. And so we're seeing less and less come in from the states.
And we're going to see less and less.
Exactly. That's, which means it falls on us.
Right. Okay, so does someone want to make a motion? Can we?
Do we move to reconsider the vote or what's the...
We have to move to reconsider the vote. So someone needs to.
Make a motion to reconsider the vote for FY eighteen.
All right, Neil, and this is...
The budget for FY eighteen.
The budget.
The vote for the budget.
Got any seconds? All those in favor? Neil, Jennifer, Lynn, Mark, myself, Kathy, all those opposed, Susan. We do, we have achieved the two thirds vote and the budget has passed. That was difficult. Thank you. Are you going to correct something?
Well, that vote was on the reconsideration. We still have to vote the budget.
Now I have to vote the budget.
And now we have to vote the budget. This is just crazy world. It's just crazy world. Okay. Thank you for the reconsideration.
So I'd like to recommend that we accept the, we, we accept the budget for FY eighteen.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
And Kathy second. All those in favor? All those opposed. Susan's opposed. We do, we have achieved our two thirds.
Thank you.
Majority. Thank you very much, Jennifer and Susan and Kathy and residents of Bolton and residents of Stowe. You have our commitment that we are going to be scrutinizing expense. Okay, moving on. Subcommittee reports. Neil, do you have anything more to share?
I think I've shared enough.
Can you be done? Can you be done? All right. Personnel.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And policy. And Mr. Jones, audit advisory?
We are meeting tomorrow to consider the proposal, responses to proposals for the RP for auditors.
Awesome.
And we will possibly have something to say about that to report out.
Terrific. So can we put you on the next agenda?
Yes, you can.
Awesome. A leader. We can put him on the next agenda. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Just a couple of things of you, I'm not sure it's posted there. For the superintendent's report, the budget, again, I just want to thank everyone for your hard work on that. I just, I'm so appreciative. And Pat and your staff, like, it was, it was such a team effort for all of us this year. Anne Marie, we bring you into the full on occasion. We bring Joan DeAngelis in, Jeff in. I mean, it was such a team effort. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work on that. The Wilder Culvert, again, I want to thank Don Low. I want to thank the chief, Harold. You know, you guys have just been amazing to work with, and I thank all of you so much for the great line of communication. Robotics communication, robotics competition. So I took in my first robotics competition the other day at WPI. We were there in competition at the high school. What an experience. Again, I'd love to bring in just one of their robots so you can see what this thing does. It's amazing. Anyway, so much fun, and it's just so exciting to see them moving on. I brought up the professional development day, but you've had a, I thought a good debrief. It was great energy, positive. It was just, it was a wonderful, wonderful day. And again, huge district-wide team effort to be so successful. And then the last thing is, I said to Lauren, I'd like to tour you through, and I think you've got, oh yes, you do have pictures here for me. So I said to Lauren, I'd like to tour you through the maze of stuff that we're working on there. This would be our...
She's so proud of her filing cabinets.
Those are nice ones.
This is, yes, but this, all of this is what came out of the freezers.
Oh my God.
And you can see, and there's cabinets here, this cabinet's there. So this is work still in progress. So this is the old extended day room downstairs when you first walk in the door.
We finally put those poor little pumpkins in a real room.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, so there's where, that would be, we call it the Bolton Room because that's ultimately where the town of Bolton is going to house all of their things. And you can still see our filing cabinets there. It's just a mess down there. But actually, it's, to be honest with you, it's an organized mess. Like, everything has its place and it's just kind of waiting. And as we continue to fill things up, everything keeps getting moved. And we want to thank our custodians because they've been working so hard with us.
That's going to be the school committee room.
Yes, this is, that's true. This what you see here is going to be the school committee room. We'll be having filing cabinets work around here and a table over here.
You don't have to deal with that anymore.
So she doesn't have to deal with the mice. And yes, so we're really excited about that. So you're right, that's our school committee. We call it the school committee room. And that's also part of the school committee room right now, but we're still working away at it. So, and again, it looks chaotic, but everything's got its place. Ultimately, this is, this is where OT and PT used to be. Ultimately, it will end up being the extended, or sorry, the digital learning. They'll ultimately go downstairs. And we've been working away, the food services extended day and our nurse leader now have just moved in to their place downstairs. We've been waiting several weeks for that. It, well, actually, I think two months, to be honest with you. But that's just wrapped up. We've got them all settled in. Our, our facilities is all, they're all organized downstairs now. So you can literally see this all starting to come together. So it's lovely. So rather than tour you, I, we thought we...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And that's if my report didn't...
She really did want to tour us too, by the way. You have me to thank for that. Okay, correspondence. I got a couple of pieces of correspondence regarding, actually, you were on them, so you have those. Okay, you're, anyone else, correspondence? And questions on the budget. Those have been resolved. On the consent agenda, the meeting minutes for March first, I'm hoping you guys did look at them. There were some edits on the March first meeting minutes that Lynn provided. And I'm good with, with those edits. Okay? And so before we move on and assume that the minutes of February twenty seventh, twenty seventeen, March first, twenty seventeen, and the warrants of MOC, but I think it's March seventeenth, twenty seventeen, are approved. You know, Lynn brought up a point and I want to go back to it because since we put the meeting minutes on the consent agenda and we just kind of moved through it unless somebody has an issue, we've recently run into a bit of an issue because there were meeting minutes provided in two thousand thirteen that are not, well...
Technically accurate?
Technically accurate. And it's created a bit of a situation, and I'm going to talk to policy about this too, because we may need to pull the tapes. And, and I know you don't want to, but if the minutes, if we're questioning the accuracy of that one set of minutes and it's created this much confusion, we need to make sure that they're correct. Please, please do take the time to read through these minutes and make sure that they're accurate because this is the record. And we've seen this year and last year how we rely so heavily on what happened to make sure that we're not making mistakes and we're not repeating mistakes and we're improving. So please do make the commitment to look at those minutes. All right.
And that's, that's not easy minutes upfront. How can we get them a little sooner? Because I figure...
So you, so I will say that Alina has, in the past couple of meetings, sending them out to me within a day or two. And I've been really good at turning them around. So you, we've talked about that. So it's on me. And yes, yeah, we're going to continue with that because I think it's worked well and I appreciate you turning them around.
Everybody's been getting them within a week. I don't send them out in the packet. Does everybody get an email like a week later saying? Do they? They get them out within a week to everybody.
But that's on me.
I knew when they were quicker, they were, they were coming quicker. But when they're two weeks apart, it's...
No, I've been sending them out exactly almost one week, I think, haven't I? Has everybody been getting them? Yeah, okay.
So you can, so you can prod me if you have a question. Any items to be considered for next agenda other than the audit advisory? And I know we've got a couple.
Calendar?
The calendar. Yeah, we need to get that on there. And you have your policies?
Yes.
Okay, so Susan, here's the deal. A calendar vote. Please, can we have time? Because I'm assuming there's a lot of policies.
Dorothy will also be here for an hour at the next meeting?
Yeah, but that's for personnel.
Right, right.
So our next meeting isn't until April twelfth, right?
April twelfth.
Okay. We're meeting with her right before that meeting for her to go over the chunk, or the...
Oh, so you won't be ready.
Well, we should. She was supposed to get the revisions to us before that. I haven't, I haven't got them.
So, okay, so this brings up a good...
But, and the ADDA one is part of that section. So we're meeting next week. We can, whoops, we can make changes to that policy. I can get them to Dorothy and then hopefully before the April meeting, we'll get them.
So if we're going to be reviewing ten to twenty or more?
Oh, it's more, yeah.
Okay, then we need a week. Like, we need, I've got to tell you personally, I, I mean, and this is something we've talked about too. Everything needs to be in the packet, other than a slew of policies. So sorry, you need to give it to us. You got to give us a week, five to seven days, because that's a lot of reading to get to.
Well, it's not in my control, is what I'm saying, yeah.
And if we need to wait...
But the ADDA one can be on the, on the April twelfth agenda.
That's fine. That's fine. But all I'm saying is if though, if that big chunk of policies is ready the day before a school, the school, next school committee meeting, just hold it off to the...
It wouldn't have been, yeah, it wouldn't have been in the packet.
Yeah, hold it off to the next one. But, you know, I even noticed a couple of late breakers tonight and today, this afternoon. Everything that is going to be presented needs to be in that packet by Friday before a school committee meeting or Monday at the very latest because we just don't have time to review it. And then Susan, you just let, let us know when you're ready. And even if you can give us pieces, or are you going to give it to us in chunks?
The way, the way she explained the process working was that we, when we meet for those, that one meeting and go over the sections, she'll go back and make the revisions that whoever's at the meeting agrees upon. And then we bring it to you, and it's not a formal approval. It's just an approval in form. And then at the very end, when the entire manual, which could take years, is completed, then you, you approve it altogether. So that's what I'm saying, like, if we, if we revise this ADDA dash one and approve it, and then we can get that in, then it'll be part of that, that chunk before... Yeah.
So is there like a second reading?
It would be, this would be like, I think there's been like six readings on, I feel like on that one.
And we've got like, what, three, four meetings left to the end of the year?
Well, before the town elections too. We've got two. Three?
No, two, you're right, because the May tenth is after the town elections.
Right. So we've got two more meetings with this group.
So what is the nature of approval that's desired for the policies that you're working with? In the sense of, is it just looks pretty good and that it goes in, it's going to come later for us to formally, very carefully review? Or is it in the sense of, we want you, school committee, to review it to be letter perfect so that later on when we have them all together, you can just say, great, we've previously reviewed them, we're ready for the change?
My understanding is this creates a new sort of baseline. So that if, like with the budget policy, that's kind of been like old business for like...
Forever.
Forever. So there are, there are a bunch, I mean, obviously many, many, many policies that, that never, that aren't a concern. Whatever they are right now is fine. So we're going to kind of reset and whatever they are now, I mean, she, she's been recommending some changes, but they've been minor and Nicole and I didn't have much of a discussion about, you know, like the majority of them. But if next year one of them comes up as a concern, then obviously we can look at it. And does, am I making sense?
Yeah.
Like, I don't expect everybody, it's, we're, it's not going to be like, I want you to approve every individual policy. It's kind of a reset on the manual. Does that make sense?
But there, but there's still, but there, I would assume there are still policies that are going to be, we've got policies from two thousand and one that should be...
There's policies in the pipeline now.
Yeah.
Like, those are staying, right? The ones in the pipeline?
Well, I don't know what you mean when you say those.
There's ones that have been going back and forth. So they've got like second readings, third readings.
Yeah, those are still, yes.
Exactly.
All the policies that we have, there are very few that are being taken out.
Yeah.
And that's all based on updated laws, you know. They're all, and they'll all be in existence still.
But are they going to be pulled, like, we've had things that have been written and rewritten. And so they're at like the second or third reading, but they still haven't been voted on. But we do want them, we do want them changed.
I'm not aware of any of that. So I mean, as a, as a new...
All right, so why don't we...
There's a list of policies that haven't been approved that aren't in the manual somewhere that you want in the manual. I would need to know about that so that when I meet with Dorothy, she, if it's not a Mass policy, then, then she's going to need to have that arranged. But I don't know where that, where it goes.
I get what you're saying. Some of them are custom, so Mass doesn't have policies that we're trying to do that are custom to this system.
Oh, we need to know if we really need those too.
I don't, where would they be if they aren't in the manual?
No, they would be in the manual.
Policies that have been marked on, right?
Well, I didn't, I wasn't really involved in policy this year. But I have it from last year.
But you said it didn't come up this year. I'm aware of all the ones that you, those are all in the manual. The ones that we've discussed this year are all in the manual already. And it's, it's like a third, fourth, fifth reading. But if you're saying that there are some that you started to create...
Yeah, the chemical health is one.
That's not actually in the manual?
Right.
Then, then, yeah.
They can't be in the manual even if it was a third or fourth reading unless it was adopted.
An approved one. I mean, like, ones that have, are up for, it's in the, they're in the manual, it's just the changes haven't been approved. Is that what you're saying?
No, they're not in the manual because some of them are brand new. Like the chemical health, we worked on the policy.
What are we doing here? This is making me nuts.
Yeah, it's making me a little crazy too.
No, back off, I'm so silly. Yeah, let's pack off. This poor woman needs a break.
No, I know exactly what you're talking, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, let's take it offline because I think at this point it's just a couple of folks that need, we need to get together. So let's move it on. And I'll let you work with your policy folks to bring something forward. If there are no other items, and Dorothy will be here, so that's an hour. And I'm trying to minimize everything else on that agenda. So you're not here until nine or nine thirty. What's going on?
You have the risk, youth risk survey to follow.
Update, which we could, actually, we could put that off to the next meeting if we choose to. We'll talk about that.
All right. Wow, you guys. Thank you, Jennifer. Can I get a second? Neil, all those in favor?